Required. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the City of Mountain View City Council Resolution Number 18613, in accordance with Assembly Bill 361. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference, with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legistar.com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview.gov/meeting to enter the Zoom meeting, or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128, and entering webinar ID 85431230162. Any emails received by 4:30 PM today were received directly by the City Council, and we'll begin with a roll call vote. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Ebay Koga?
Here.
Councilmember Hicks?
Here.
Councilmember Lieber?
Here.
Councilmember Maticek?
Here.
Councilmember Scholter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Kamai?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we can move on to item three, which is our study session. Item 3.1 is our Housing Element Update. The purpose of this study session is for staff to brief the City Council on the Housing Element Requirements, and for the City Council to discuss and provide input on initial Housing Element Program Policy, sorry, on initial program and policy direction. After the staff presentation, the Council will answer the following two questions in turn. Question one is, does the City Council have any comments regarding new key housing element requirements related to the following: RENA approach and sites inventory constraints to housing? Question two, does the City Council support the initial list of draft housing policy topics? Are there other policy topics that should be included? Principal Planner Eric Anderson and Senior Planner Ellen Yao will present the memo. Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Archie Shervostova and the city's consultants Matt Cota from BAE Urban Economics, and Beverly Choi from Environmental Science Associates are available for questions. I think we'll start with you, Ms. Yao, is that right?
No, I'll start, Mayor, thank you so much. This is Eric Anderson, Principal Planner. Can you hear me? Okay, great, awesome, let me share my screen. Again, thank you very much, Mayor Kamai, City Council. This is a study session regarding the Housing Element Update. I'm Eric Anderson, I'm joined by Ellen Yao, who's managing the Housing Element Update process. Here is an overview of the presentation. We do have two questions for Council tonight regarding the key requirements and challenges, as well as the potential policy topics. First, an overview of what the Housing Element is. It is a chapter of the general plan, and it's regarding the city's housing needs. State law requires every city and county to update up the housing element every eight years, and it must meet strict requirements set by the state. After it's adopted, the State Department of Housing and Community Development must approve it. All Bay Area jurisdictions are updating their housing elements at the same time, right now. A housing element has five key components. We must assess our housing needs, including demographic and housing trends. We have to evaluate the previous housing element. The section that usually receives the most focus is the housing's inventory, where the city shows that it can accommodate the number of assigned units in the RENA. In addition, we must show that there aren't any other barriers to accommodating the RENA through the constraints analysis. Lastly, the city must identify goals, policies, and programs to further support the creation of housing. This cycle brings a series of new requirements and challenges. Many of these are the result of new state laws intended to address the state's housing crisis. These include a significant increase in the RENA, additional requirements for the sites inventory, no net loss, which requires the city to maintain its inventory throughout the cycle, even if individual sites do not redevelop as planned, changes to the city, and changes to the city's constraints, and affirmatively furthering fair housing. The Housing Element must identify sites that can reasonably accommodate the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. This is the number of units the city must plan for over the next eight years of the housing element. It is determined through a process that starts with the state assigning needs, a housing need to the region, which then allocates that need among all the local jurisdictions. The city is not required to build the units, only to identify opportunity sites and remove barriers to their development. However, not building the units does have implications, including review of some residential developments without discretion or public hearing through SB 35. This slide shows the increased RENA Mountain View is responsible to accommodate over the next Housing Element Cycle, a total of 11,135 units. It is a almost fourfold increase over the previous cycle. In addition to the increased RENA, there will be additional requirements for whether a site qualifies as a Housing Element Site. This is done through the site inventory analysis. Some of these requirements include that it has to be zoned for residential use, there has to be access to appropriate utilities, it has to be able to be developed within the planning period. In addition, lower income sites must be zoned for at least 20 dwelling units per acre, though we are confirming whether this may be increased to 30 based on updated census numbers. In any case, we do anticipate most sites will be in excess of 30 dwelling units per acre, no matter what. The city must also consider fair housing implications, such as avoiding clustering and supporting access to high resource areas. If existing zoning cannot accommodate the full RENA, the city must identify areas to rezone to create additional capacity. The project team has prepared an initial approach for accommodating the city's RENA, which benefits from the proactive work the city has done to enable housing at all income levels. First, we divide the 11,135 units into above moderate units and other units. The 4,880 above moderate units will be easily accommodated through known pipeline and anticipated development. The 6,255 other units cannot be fully accommodated through known pipeline or anticipated projects, though we anticipate that approximately half of this amount can be. In other words, we will likely need to identify sites with zoning and constraints that do not preclude development for about 3,200 units. Because of the no net loss law, we will be identifying approximately 30% more to ensure that we have enough capacity in case these sites do not develop with affordable housing. The project team will first focus on existing zoning to accommodate these units. We do not recommend relying on the R3 update, since its outcome and timing are currently uncertain. If existing zoning cannot accommodate these units, we will propose targeted rezonings. We are seeking any input Council may wish to provide on this approach and the site inventory process. In addition to identifying sites with adequate zoning, we must also analyze whether any constraints preclude residential development, including government's constraints and economic constraints. Though we may not be able to control every constraint, we must demonstrate local efforts to remove constraints that hinder the city from meeting its housing needs. If there are constraints present, we must reduce it or other constraints to enable development, or find areas not subject to those constraints. It's also important to note that fair housing laws mandate that sites throughout the city be identified for lower incomes. Some examples of constraints include city fees, standards, and process, which we will further analyze later in the process. Another example is the recently proposed Wisman School District Community Facilities District, which would likely increase costs and reduce sales to, sales on, sales prices on new units. If areas north of Central Expressway were made less hospitable for housing, sites in other areas would likely need to be identified. The city recognizes the effect of growth on the schools and has partnered with the school districts on a collaborative approach with the school strategy adopted by Council in 2020. This is a three-part approach that includes a land strategy for the city to support school acquisition of land, a cost-to-share strategy, which acknowledges the range of resources available to schools, and a shared understanding of the financial gap and communicating it to developers who may volunteer contributions. The city continues to look forward to collaborating with the school districts in meeting their needs. The first question to Council is on the slide here. We are asking Council to focus their comments on these two main topics: the RENA approach and sites inventory, and constraints to housing. The Housing Element is required to include policies and programs to facilitate housing production and to address housing needs. To generate these policies and programs, the project team has identified policy topics based on the previous element, Council's strategic priorities, key requirements, and outreach. The second question for Council is to provide feedback on this list, including your support or other topics we should consider. I'll now turn over the presentation to Ellen.
Great, thank you, I think we can go on to the next slide. Alright, so I wanted to cover the public outreach. The project has included a significant amount of outreach to date. As you can see, we have done informational video, a website, interviews, pop-up events, community meetings, and a survey that's currently ongoing until the end of the year, and available at our website at mvhousingelement.org. The summary of these activities are included in the staff report as an attachment, and they did help inform the initial list of policy topics that you saw on the previous slide. So the project team is going to be working on identifying populations that are underrepresented based off of the outreach that we've already done. So we're doing targeted outreach with the school district and other CBOs, and we will report back at a later date with outcomes of that effort. If you can go on to the next slide. So over the next year, the project team will come back to the City Council for a couple more study sessions, which includes a review of the public draft in June. HCD will be reviewing our draft prior to adoption by Council, as well as after adoption, to ensure compliance with Housing Element Law. State law requires the city to adopt the Housing Element by January 2023, and we will have them review the Housing Element and provide feedback, expected within 60 days. If any revisions are required after HCD reviews the draft, cities will take the, the city will take the comments from HCD, revise the draft, and present it to EPC and CC for the adoption hearings. If any revisions are required, after we make those revisions, revised housing elements will need to be submitted by May 2023, or 120 days after the housing elements are due. There are additional statutory deadlines related to rezonings that staff will update Council as we develop more of the site inventory to determine whether we need rezoning. So throughout the schedule, we will be conducting a necessary analysis required under the California Environmental Quality Act, and we will keep Council updated in the study sessions in February and in June. On the next slide. Here is a reminder are the questions for Council consideration tonight. We have two questions. This concludes our presentation, and we look forward to answering any questions. To assist with us tonight, we do have Beverly Choi of ESA and Matt Cota of BAE Urban Economics, our consulting team. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So since this is a study session, we're actually going to take public comment first. So would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom, or press star nine on your phone. It will display a two-minute timer on the screen. Great, so we'll just reset the timer. Gary Rosen. Gary Rosen? You just need to unmute. There you go. Did you get the unmute request, Gary? Here we go. Try one more time. There you go, okay, we'll restart the timer, Gary, hold on just a second. Okay, here we go, go ahead.
Okay. Well, what I was saying, I downloaded the staff report and I read through it, and I was pretty impressed with it as being thorough and detailed. And I wanted to reemphasize what I believe they said in the presentation, that they recommend the housing element, that we try to satisfy the housing element through the, the existing general and precise plans, and not try to rely so much on rezoning. You know, some people suggested that we need extensive R3 rezoning, and that's another question, but staff pointed out, I think on page 14 of the report, that that, that may not actually do as much to create more affordable housing, which is really the biggest issue, since, you know, we will probably be able to satisfy the, the element for, for the more expensive housing. And the, the general and precise plans were developed over a period, I know, I, I remember the process there. They were developed over a period of time and took input from all the citizens of Mountain View. That's another thing to remember, that, you know, people talk about stakeholders, but the most important stakeholders, I believe, are the residents of Mountain View here. And in fact, the, these plans are actually admired outside of Mountain View, because they're seen as an example of thoughtful city planning. So if we, if we make any changes to that with regard to zoning or anything else, we should take the same amount of deliberation to, to make sure that everyone in the city is represented when we make these changes. Thanks, that's all.
Great, thank you. Devin Conley?
Good evening, Mayor Kamai, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and honorable Councilmembers. My name is Devin Conley, and I'm the President of the Mountain View Wisman School Board. I'd first like to say thank you to the city for your partnership with our district, as well as the high school district and our neighboring Los Altos School District, around trying to find ways to house the student growth that we anticipate is going to come as we build more units in this city. We're facing a climate crisis and a housing crisis, not just here in Mountain View, but across our state and our world. And one of the imperatives to help address the climate crisis is to increase density and have more housing. That being said, making sure that the students that will come with that housing, those constituents will be served with school facilities, is going to be an important part of planning for the future. So the school district has been working with information from the city planning department. I know that your director of planning has been coordinating with our demographer and consultants to help us try and project what those impacts will be, and what we have to prepare for. One of the things that we believe is a positive of this future growth that we're going to see is the opportunity to do some land banking, that the city and the school district in partnership perhaps could work on acquiring green space that could become schools with shared park facilities in the future, when the schools need to be built to match the construction. We appreciate your time this evening. As you consider the housing element, please keep in mind the students who will be generated. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Cox?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Kamai, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this Housing Element Update. Livable Mountain View, for which I'm speaking for the Steering Committee, supports the general direction of the staff's approach to meeting our RENA allocation. In particular, we concur with staff statement on page 14 that they do not recommend assuming R3 update densities in the site inventory because of the timing of the R3 update, uncertainty of future densities, and the fact that many R3 sites will not result in net new units that could cause displacement effects and counter the city's housing and equity goals. We are looking for robust, fair, and effective public outreach to make any important decisions on widespread rezoning in our city, and we continue to recommend that the established precise and general plan process is the best way to decide what, where, and when significant changes should be made to our city's zoning and land use. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jessica Gandhi? Hi Jessica, hold on, let me try to click it again. There you go.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Sorry. I can see that. Okay. My name's Jessica Gandhi, and I live in the North Wisman neighborhood area and have been a leading member of that neighborhood association for over 20 years. Recently, neighbors and I have been meeting up and talking about the ramifications of R3 zoning to the neighborhood and the city as a whole. And we have personally reached out to City Council members and EPC to share our concerns. And tonight, I just want to again reiterate that we do not want Mountain View to rely on rezoning to meet the RHNA numbers, and that any R3 rezoning considerations be done only after the robust and fair public outreach. Personally, I witnessed what I feel is outright bias at some of these outreach meetings, where the concerns against rezoning that a lot of us had brought up were literally left out in the summaries from the moderators back to, you know, you guys. And so I feel that that's, the City Council is not getting accurate representation of the people who live in Mountain View from the citizens. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Salim Damartigi?
Hi, I'm Salim, a member of Mountain View YMB. The Housing Element is a once-in-a-decade opportunity to shape our city's future. And for as much good as we've done as a city, and we are a role model city, we only have to look around to see we are still treading water when it comes to stemming rising rents, displacements, and homelessness. With this Housing Element, we need to insist on solutions that match the scale of the housing crisis. With this housing plan, you are setting a vision for the next decade of housing policies, and the ensuing projects will last half a century. This Housing Element, and its potential to end the housing crisis, or at least stem it in Mountain View, can be a major part of your legacy on City Council. We can close our city's jobs housing imbalance, if we want to. We can upzone high opportunity areas to give kids from working-class families a leg up on life, if we want to. We can give housing insecure neighbors the protections they deserve, and we can overshoot our housing targets and create thousands of homes affordable across the income spectrum, if we want to. There is a lot to say about the toolbox of housing policies you can choose from. There's one thing that I think is particularly important. In the staff report, they mentioned correctly that they need to take into account the likelihood of redevelopment on inventory sites, and that if the likelihood of development is sufficiently low, that additional zoning is necessary. I believe we need to take a data-driven approach to calculating that likelihood of redevelopment. Los Angeles and San Francisco are using rigorous modeling, but if you just even look at simple statistics, it's very helpful. Mountain View is on track to develop around 21% of its fifth RENA cycle site inventory. So you should apply great scrutiny to a housing element that claims the median inventory size has much more than a 21% chance of development by 2031. So I think additional upzoning is likely necessary. I hope we use data to come up with the likelihood of redevelopment estimates, and I hope we insist on solutions that match the scale of the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat?
Alright, good evening, honorable members of the Mountain View City Council. My name is Kat Wertham, and I'm the South Bay and Peninsula Organizer for the Housing Action Coalition. I'm here tonight to express the importance of a robust housing element that affirmatively furthers fair housing and meets the future needs of Mountain View. To achieve this goal, the Housing Action Coalition believes the city of Mountain View should look at multiple ways of encouraging new development. First, by following the federal requirement to affirmatively further fair housing, identifying sites for low-income individuals to live across the city, and not placing the majority of new housing opportunities in just the East Wisman area or the North Bay Shore area is critical to the success of the next housing element. Additionally, looking at other areas within Mountain View that you can rezone to expand housing, such as within the downtown core, through a revisit to the downtown precise plan, for which we know an update is imminent, is another potential opportunity. Next, we know that more naturally occurring affordable housing is torn down in Mountain View than most other cities in the county. We'd encourage the city to look at ways to encourage preservation of those homes, while also encouraging new homes of all income levels, not just for-sale options that are currently being produced in the city. This may include following San Jose's Ellis Act ordinance update, among other examples. Then lastly, we'd encourage the city to work with developers and community stakeholders to examine citywide feats on new development, to ensure that those fees help and not hinder new development. An example would be working with the school district to ensure that the CFD, as outlined in the staff report, does not place an unfair burden on new development. And then just in conclusion, I'd like to thank city staff, really just fantastic staff report, very thoughtful, and then just always, always have diligent attention to detail. So really wanted to say I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Ma?
Evening, City Council. My name is Kevin Ma, a resident and homeowner in the San Antonio neighborhood. I like to remind the Council that RENA is meant to be a floor, in the words of Jesse Aragon, is that this is the bare minimum we need to make so that our city's housing costs and housing burden on its population doesn't grow more than what it is currently. So there should be a greater amenability to set up, you know, internally a higher target. There's no great penalty to having, you know, more people in our community, other than, or more homes in our community specifically, other than rents going down, or, you know, more people to make Mountain View what it is. I understand that obviously there's a lot of concerns about traffic, about the impacts of people coming in, but inherently, if we do not plan for that correctly in RENA, then we have basically screwed ourselves in planning for, you know, our urban forestry plans, or whatever active transportation planning we have. So we need to be focused on people first, and then make all the plans correctly afterwards. Fundamentally, I agree that all the policies that staff have proven is good. In particular, we need to be making sure that it's streamlined and have correct staffing, because inherently, development is a cutthroat business. If we make too many roadblocks, the only people who are going to be in the business are, you know, a-holes. So we do need to make sure that we are giving that development a good player's shot so that we can have, you know, cheaper developments that can be built faster, rather than delaying everything to decades afterwards. Thank you.
Dennis Martin?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff. I'm Dennis Martin, speaking on behalf of BIA Bay Area. BIA agrees with the staff analysis that the city's site inventory would likely accommodate most RENA through its specific and precise plans, but that constraints will be significant, and that the Mountain View Wisman School District CFD is a potential significant constraint on the production of housing, and is, BIA is concerned about the proposed Meller Roofs imposing highly disproportionate new annual taxes on new market rate units and new BMR units. The district's proposed CFD would likely be unfair and unjust because it would run afoul of California State Constitution Section 4, as it would unfairly create highly disproportionate tax rates on new residential units versus existing residential units. It would also be in conflict with state facility funding law, because it would be a de facto school facilities mitigation measure on residential development, which, as you know, state law expressly preempts. The district's CFD would likely have a significant effect on housing production in Mountain View, complicating the efforts of the city to craft the next housing element, and would contribute to the already troublesome economic challenges to craft the next housing element and would contribute to the already troublesome economic challenges of new development in North Mountain View currently confronted by high fees and taxes as analyzed by the city in twenty nineteen and likely make housing infeasible to build throughout the north side planning areas for many years to come. BIA is afraid, in fact, that the ballot measure could become a referendum on all new housing in Mountain View, exacerbating already tense politics of housing development existing in the city. And so we strongly encourage the city council to continue closely monitoring the district's CFD scheme, continue to work to find ways of facilitating residential and school needs and direct staff to continue close work with the district monitoring.
Thank you. Thank you. Tony Ra.
Hi, I'm Tony Ra. So I am a resident in Questa Park for more than ten years. And I would like to support the staff report in recommending that the Rena allocation should be met with projects other than the R three rezoning proposal. The R three proposal is flawed in many ways. I will only mention one here, which is that it is not suitable to meet the city's housing and equity goals. This is because it would displace existing residents and rent controlled units during redevelopment, which can easily be several years. And it is unclear where these tenants are going to live during these years. And after project completion, their plans may have changed and they may decide to not come back, which means they're effectively displaced. And in addition, since the R three project targets areas that are already developed with housing, existing units will first have to be destroyed before replacing them. And the result is basically a modest net gain in the number of units. And we can get more housing units if we are looking for projects where no housing has previously existed. And so finally, I'd like to recommend that we use the established precise plan and general plan processes to make changes to the city zoning and land use rules. Because those generally have seen wide input from the community and consensus. And they also come with the necessary infrastructure planning that is absent from the R three rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Muir.
Yeah, good evening, council members and staff. Thank you, council members, for providing me with the chance to share my opinion regarding the city's proposed new R three zoning standards. I do appreciate that staff and council are open to looking at alternatives to meeting the Rena numbers besides just upzoning all sites throughout the city. I want to say I support city staff doing outreach to all demographics in the city. I also asked city staff to meet with single family dwelling units, let them know how the R three standards could affect them and what they think about these impacts. For example, informing each neighborhood's affected how tall, including bonus provisions, and the new building standards could be, how close those new R three buildings would be, how much traffic would increase, how much parking would be impacted and how nearby schools could be affected and what the city plans to do to increase green space to accommodate high number of people affected in those neighborhoods. I would also like to ask city staff to identify other cities which have changed their zoning standards and find out how these zoning changes has impacted that community and what they would do differently. If the city has to use rezoning in some fashion to meet Rena numbers, I recommend the following. Create wider setbacks for projects near single family dwelling units. Restrict height for stacked flats next to single family dwelling units. Create green space between stacked flats and single family neighborhoods. Increase green space and allow stacked flats to be further away. Require developers to provide underground parking for any new multi-MFE units being built. And also, I'd like to ask that the consultant to provide at least three options for the city to meet these new Rena numbers. One example was using the precise and general plan process, updating zoning, but include protections near single story dwellings as indicated above and look at only. Thank you.
Kalisha Webster.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kalisha Webster and I'm a housing advocate for Housing Traces. We advocate for increased housing accessibility for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, a special needs group for which the city is required to include a housing needs assessment as part of the housing element. As a direct service provider, helping people with developmental disabilities find independent housing, we see firsthand every day their growing need for this high risk population to have access to integrated and inclusive housing as more group homes are closing and many are living at home with aging parents. Because of the fixed or extreme limited incomes of this population, they are at increased risk of displacement or homelessness. And I'm likely to be harmed by these circumstances as their disability requires that they receive supportive services from both formal service providers as well as informal support systems developed from having grown up in Mountain View. We appreciate the city has shown a willingness to help house these extremely vulnerable members of the Mountain View community such as at Luna Vista and San Antonio Place, where a number of units are set aside for people with developmental disabilities who require coordinated supportive services from the regional center in order to maintain their housing. While these units have provided more opportunities for people with developmental disabilities to live independently, the city still has a long way to go in meeting the housing needs of Mountain View residents with developmental disabilities. State financing laws require development of units for people with physical disabilities needing modified units. However, there are no requirements to increase accessibility for people with developmental disabilities. It is therefore up to you as local policymakers to develop plans to increase accessibility for this high risk population. We urge the city to make sure that outreach to people with developmental disabilities and other special needs groups which the city is required to provide a housing assessment for is part of the update process. It's important that assessment of constraints and development of programs and policies to address these constraints is informed by the people directly affected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Blakely.
Good evening, Mayor Kamai. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, council members. I'm Laura Blakely, Vice President of the Mountain View Wisman School District. And I wanted to say that we are a community. We all need to be creative and work together to find solutions that achieve all of our goals, including affordable housing. We means the city government, the school districts, the community and key businesses. None of us can do this alone in silos. Our community needs affordable housing, but we as a community also need the amenities that go along with this housing. And as things stand, the schools will be left holding the bag. Wherever new housing developments are located, there will be kids who live there who will need schools to attend. The school districts have limited funding sources. The Mountain View Wisman has explored many, many options over a number of years, including establishing a Melrose Community Facilities District. This may not be an ideal solution, but it's the best one we've been able to identify. Developer fees are currently limited by state statute, thank you, BIA lobbyists, to four dollars and six cents per square foot. This is only enough money to rent portables and plop them on existing sites. And our kids will have to cross the city to be transported to existing schools outside of their neighborhoods. So we need to work together to identify other sources of funding and land now. Land is a diminishing resource, but costs fifteen to twenty million per acre. We know we can't force the city to identify land or large owners like Google, which earned eighteen point nine billion dollars of net income last quarter to provide land. And we can't force the developers to provide school development fees in excess of four dollars and six cents. But I really hope that the schools, the city, major landowners like Google and even voluntarily developers can identify, work together to provide funding sources and land that can be used as green space initially and as school and community parks in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise Katz.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. On behalf of livable Mountain View, I wanted to state my agreement with the prior speakers that the issue of rezoning is not something that we should be undertaking at this time before we have had some important decisions and a lot of outreach and some answers to a lot of the questions that the public is asking for. I wanted to also acknowledge what others have said that there seems to be this odd kind of economic imbalance that some people don't seem to recognize that tearing down buildings in addition to the cost of the land that they're sitting on is somehow going to yield affordable units. We know developers are not going to build to bring down rents. They're going to phase in their buildings and they're going to keep the market as tight as possible. They're not in the business of earning less money. Google has showed us this when they indicated years back that whatever they built, they would be phasing in over a period of time. They were not in a rush to build everything all at once. I also wanted to point out that the concept of how many people will be displaced and the impact on the community is something that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Jeans.
I have slides, of course.
I was gonna ask, okay.
Okay, I have my own timers. I'll just get started. Well, Quirk is getting those ready. Good evening, Mayor Kamai, council members. Albert Jeans, longtime resident of Strawn Estates. I totally agree.
Albert, Albert, please, I'm sorry, let me, let me stop the timer and let's get your slides on the screen first, okay?
Okay.
Council, council can't see it until.
Oh.
Yeah, we don't, we don't see it yet. Okay. We see the slides now, so let's restart the timer for two minutes.
Okay.
I'll keep, I'll keep, I'll keep count two. Go ahead.
All right. Okay, first, I totally agree with staff's opinion that the in process progress R three rezoning should not be counted on to meet the Rena numbers. At the last EPC study session, the proposed R three rezoning would have allowed buildings like this to be constructed next to single stories, single family homes. This is a view of R three dash C behind the houses on Farley. Clearly, more work needs to be done to make the rezoning acceptable most Mountain View residents. Next slide, please. There's a lot, there's a lot said in the staff memo about the challenges of providing schools for Mountain View's increased population, but not much was said about parks. Based on Mountain View's Rena allocation, about sixty seven acres of new parkland must be dedicated to serve the new residents. Note that the area north of El Camino Real is already running a parkland deficit and I calculate that there's only one point six acres for a thousand residents, including part time school grounds, but not including Sherline Park, which is a regional park. Parks should be located within the neighborhoods they're intended to serve. Next slide, please. How big is sixty seven acres? I don't have a very good feeling for that. So to some numbers, I thought of Mountain View's two largest parks, Questa and Rankstore, and also threw in Shenandoah Square near my home since it is a potential acquisition. The total coincidentally equals sixty seven acres. So along with the twenty two thousand new residents, this is the amount of park space which must be anticipated. Next slide, please. For two of the three change areas, new parklands seem feasible. In North Bay Shore and East Wisman, Google's master plans so far include enough park space for their proposed residential units. I think the challenge would be El Camino, which is already densely developed. Dedication of new parkland will require the destruction of existing buildings, which means new buildings will have to be that much taller to accommodate more units. Meeting the arena numbers may well mean residential towers along El Camino Real. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Lewis.
Damn time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, I'll try to be brief here. I, I do support the staff's approach to meeting our Rena goals for the sixth cycle. I really don't view Rena as a floor, as some have suggested. I think it's probably a growthly optimistic projection on, on our, our growth. I also agree with not assuming the R three update densities based on the uncertainties. We heard about data driven with this previous speaker and data driven depends on data. And there's an old saying, garbage in, garbage out. It's only your projections are only as good as your data. Which we didn't hear about that. I don't think the R three updates would produce many affordable housing units. It proves a lot of other stuff. And they would have a lot of other detrimental effects. I worry about whether we have enough electricity and enough water in the future, in ten or twenty years, to support all these new residents and offices. It doesn't come out of thin air. And I would say there needs to be a lot more public outreach than we've had. I've been really very little so far to ensure this is really a transparent process. And the end result that we get is what these citizens of Mountain View, the people who live here want and what they can live with. That's what I'd like to see. So I'd suggest working a little harder on the general and precise plans. Don't take an R three quick fix rezoning approach to things. But do your work with, with a general and precise plans. Thank you.
Thank you. David Holsey? Or Daniel? Sorry about that, Daniel.
Yeah, hi, you can hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
All right. So I just want to comment, I read through some of the memo. One thing I noticed in the report, you know, so we have several income categories for housing that that we need to try and address. And, you know, if you look at our historical trend here, we have strategies for making very low income housing. We have strategies for making low income and we have strategies for above moderate. But if you look at the numbers for moderate housing, meaning housing for people who make median income, there have been eighteen units created. And so I think we need a strategy to make sure that AMI housing gets built. And my main strategy for this that we need to look at is looking at parking requirements. So this is something that has been done. It has, it has been proven in other cities. You eliminate parking requirements and the rent drops twenty percent on average. And the reason is it costs less to build. Parking is a luxury, so people who don't need it don't have to pay for it. And the math really checks out on this. If you look at, if you do the math on AMI and above AMI, twenty percent less puts you in that category. Of course, there are a whole bunch of other benefits to this kind of housing. Lets you build density without adding to traffic. And then it increases uses of transit and our green transportation options and elope carbon footprint. So that's, that's my main comment. We need to look at reducing our parking requirements so that we can start making this moderate income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. It says, it's an email address. I think it might be Olga Bright or Bright Olga.
Um, I, I'm a Mountain View resident and I'm, thank you, the council and the mayor for giving me this opportunity to participate. I'm just, I'm actually, I don't really have a background in planning, but I've been listening with great interest to the comments that, that have been made. I'm, I'm very concerned in response to the previous speaker about eliminating parking for new buildings. Otherwise, people will just simply park on surrounding streets and cause a lot of congestion. Having said that, I'm already concerned about the zoning plans that have been put in place in some areas, in particular, in the Montaloma area where it seems like there are two areas that have been zoned R three in an area that's of single family housing. And I don't know how that came to be, but I think it's something that should be reconsidered. I yield the balance of my time to another speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't yield time to other speakers, but thank you very much. Kelsey Baines.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kelsey Baines. I am the Regional Director for YMB Action. And we are part of the Campaign for Fair Housing Elements, which is a statewide coalition working to enforce new housing element laws, including affirmatively furthering fair housing, which mandates that cities need to dismantle patterns of segregation. So one of the really important things for Mountain View is to plan for housing in high resource neighborhoods, including downtown and avoid concentrating all the housing development in industrial areas with few resources or on high traffic corridors. With regards to outreach, we've heard quite a bit from securely housed homeowners who want minimal change this evening. But we're really missing input from people who are not. but we're really missing input from people who are not being served by our current housing policies. So people who are staying in interim housing, vehicle dwellers, day center workers. So those are voices that we really need to bring to the table. I was glad to hear staff mention a potentially very significant restraint or constraint with Amela Ru's proposal. We do support schools. We want to see them funded, but it needs to be a well-designed funding mechanism so that it doesn't harm the families of students and educators by killing needed development. And finally, it's hard to imagine that rezoning is not going to be part of this process. And so we want to be looking at anti-displacement policies along with the rezoning, but I think Mountain View is going to need to consider rezoning as part of this process. The status quo will not suffice. Thank you.
Julie Muir?
Hello, Honorable May, Vice Mayor Ramirez and council members. My name is Julie Muir, and I've been a homeowner in Mountain View for over 25 years. I support staff in not recommending that council count on the R3 project to make the next cycle of Rena numbers. As other speakers have said, the R3 project needs to go through a robust, fair, comprehensive, and effective public outreach so that everyone in the community understands what, what its impact will be on their community. Applying R3 rezoning will not result in many net new units per site and will displace current residents, as I've seen in other developments throughout the city, at least temporarily or even permanently from our city. Doing so is counter to our city's housing and equity goals. I'm not against growth, but it needs to be done thoughtfully and considerately. Speaking of the public outreach effort, I've also found that the people running the housing element workshops that I attended on September 23rd were very pro-density and didn't acknowledge my concerns of too much density, concern over where that growth happens, and the lack of infrastructure and city services. I really felt like my opinion as a long-term residential, homeowning citizen of Mountain View wasn't valued, which then spurred me to come to city council meetings. So maybe that's not such a bad thing. But I was shocked that they were more interested in talking to people who wanted to live in Mountain View and advocacy groups and not their own long-term residents. Lastly, I have heard, we had earlier, to eliminate or unbundle parking requirements and to relax development standards to facilitate development. I think that's a really short-sighted thinking that creates huge problems for the community in the future. We just don't have the transportation infrastructure that supports high proportion of residents. Some of us do. I bike to work, but I can't, I don't have the ability to get rid of my car. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No name. It says Events SVH.
I apologize. That is Events Silicon Valley at Home. My name is Matthew Reed. I'm the Director of Policy at SV at Home. Mayor, Mayor and Council, I appreciate this opportunity, and I really appreciate the staff's presentation. We are tracking this process throughout the county. I would, a lot of respect for the work that staff is doing to engage the community. We know this is a difficult challenge. One of the things that we've been trying to explain, and I think is valuable in this context, is that while there is a lot of choice and a need to make difficult and challenging and important decisions at the local level, this is also a process that is happening within constraints that are set by state law. There are new numbers, and there are new rules, and how you meet them are, are up to you, and there should be an active discussion. But it's, it's important to acknowledge that this is a process that has to be done, that a compliant housing element is essential, and it won't be simple, and it, it's something that people need to lean into as opposed to, to run away from. One of the greatest challenges that we're seeing is that cities like Mountain View have done a tremendous job of doing important planning work and preparation, with specific and precise plans, and that in the interim, the, the state distributed guidance for affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is a 2018 law. It wasn't unexpected, but the expectation is that the, the development will be dispersed throughout the community in all portions of your city and not be concentrated in isolated areas. We know this is a challenge, but we're looking forward to working going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula?
Good evening, Mayor.
Hello.
Good evening, council member, members. I would like to reiterate some of the points that were brought up by homeowners, longtime homeowners in Mountain View. I live in Questa Park and have raised my children here in Questa Park and really enjoyed being in the city for the last 30 or so years. Changing and rezoning the city is a huge, huge step, and I think there really needs to be a very robust, fair, and effective public outreach before R3 rezoning efforts can take place or can be used for, for the Rena process. So I completely support staff in, in that the, the R3 zoning should not be the way for us to reach arena numbers. But also, the, the other thing that really nags at me is that affordability percentages of whatever projects we're going to try to interject through precise planning throughout the city may not be enough to reach the arena numbers required of us to, to reach. Back in October 20th, when the EPC met the Environmental Planning Commission, Commissioner Yan really stressed on the importance of finding a way so that we can increase the percentage of affordable housing in the approved projects currently or going forward. And I think she mentioned community trusts that the city, perhaps along with the county or the state, can find a way to, you know, pull resources to increase the affordable percentage of the housing now and moving forward. Thank you.
Ilya Gurin?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
My name is Ilya Gurin, and I'm a member of Mountain View YMB. Pleased to be speaking with you tonight. Mountain View has a unique opportunity to set a strategy to provide homes for our future neighbors. However, the arena is a significant challenge, particularly at the low-income levels. So significant reforms will be needed. Mountain View is considered to have an unfriendly environment for development. Administrative delays are routine. We encourage the city to streamline permitting and invest in expanded staff capacity to process development applications promptly. Expanded, we also need to expand our zoned capacity for development. We strongly encourage the city to create an affordable housing overlay zone that would allow significantly increased density beyond the state density bonus for projects that provide significant affordable housing. In particular, areas near transit, such as downtown, San Antonio, and El Camino can support significantly higher density than they have today. If we rezoned up to 10 stories or more, just to throw out a hypothetical number, we would unlock significant resources to grant a right-of-return for any displaced tenants and to create the additional affordable units required under Rena. Furthermore, we agree with the staff recommendation to not rely on the R3 zoning update to meet the Rena target. However, we strongly report, strongly support the R3 update itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott O'Neil?
Hi, thank you. I'm a former Mountain View resident. I lived and worked there for about 10 years. I miss living within walking distance of Castro and hope many more people get to enjoy that as part of their lifestyle. I've heard people opposed to housing talking about children, and as a father of two, I want to encourage everyone to think one step deeper and consider your grandchildren. In particular, where do you think your children will, will form households if cities in our region are not building enough housing? Do you think your grandchildren will live if your children form households far away? Those of us who grew up in the Bay Area in recent decades can tell you. Our experiences, maybe Texas, maybe Oregon, Arizona's popular. It's going to be someplace that's producing housing. So if you don't want to be lonely in your old age, if you don't want to have to buy a plane ticket to see your grandchildren, if you want instead to be able to bike or walk to see them, then please consider supporting building them that, that home that they will need. Rena ought to be the floor, not the ceiling. Thank you.
James Kuzemal?
Good evening. I'm James Kuzemal. I'm a lifelong resident of the Willigate neighborhood and just speaking for myself today. I just want to call out a couple of key points that I think, first, in order to encourage more cheaper and more sustainable housing, like Daniel was mentioning earlier, we should remove parking minimums wherever possible and where feasible impose fees or constraints to prevent extra parking being built to ensure that new residents both have access to more affordable housing and to ensure that new residents don't bring additional car traffic. And this is particularly important in areas near transit where there are reasonable options for people to not own a car. And there will be all the existing housing stock for those few residents who may need to be able to rent an apartment or buy a house that does have parking. Secondly, I would call out some of the affirmatively furthering fair housing concerns that I believe a couple of speakers already called out about concentrating all our planned new housing in a few areas. Our most transit-rich and mini-rich neighborhoods are in the immediate vicinity of downtown. And I mean, I live in one of those neighborhoods in Willigate, where a lot of the land is currently just detached, single-family homes, which are a very inefficient use of space and effectively hoarding the land for no good reason. And we should be focusing a lot more upzoning in those areas to ensure that we're actually making use of the little transit infrastructure we have. And lastly, just as a general comment, we can plan for more housing in the Rena allocations. It's, if we accidentally end up with more housing getting built than our allocations say, that's not a bad thing. We want more people to be able to live here. And I don't, so let's aim as high as we reasonably can. It's not, it's not the end of the world if we get more neighbors. Thank you.
Tutu?
Oh, hi there. Yes, hi, good evening, council members and Mayor Kamai. My name is Tutu Thompson. I live in one of the R3 zones myself. A few things I wish to say, well, first of all, I want to make my point clear. I am against the current density plan for reforming the R3 zone. And so, point one, the parking. It's a wishful thinking to eliminate, eliminate some parkings that allow more building space. It, it sounds good, but in reality, especially in the areas that public transit is not well-established. It's impossible to live without a car. I, 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 I have two kids, I mean, I have three kids. And, you know, if, if I take one of them to the swimming class and the one right next to the tennis class, forget about it. Public transportation, no way. So it, it sounds good, but it's not feasible. And then the other thing is, I, I wish to say is, could the city try to meet the RHNA allocation without counting on the R3 zoning? So that's a second thing. And the third thing is, I highly, I highly recommend the city to improve the outreach, outreach effect, outreach to the affected residents. Most people I talk to that live on the same street I live, that which is considered R3 zone, they don't know about it. When I ask them, they're like, what's going on? They don't know about it. Just like one of previous resident, when she brought up, she joined the last outreach meeting, which resulted her to feel like her opinion was not valued. So she came to today's meeting. I actually felt the same way at that meeting she attended. I felt like they didn't want to hear the R3 zoning residents' opinion. So I think, all, all in all, I feel a little bit scary that people from all over the place that has no skin in the game isn't, you know, saying about the-
Thank you, thanks. Trevor Wu?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm a commuter who works in Palo Alto, and I just want to commend Mountain View for at least building more housing than Palo Alto has. So I want to express my support for more density within Silicon Valley. This is one of the greatest job centers in the entire world. It's where my parents moved and immigrated to achieve the American dream. And I hope that young people like me, you know, I'm a new college grad, that we have enough housing for everyone here to also achieve the American dream in the future. Thank you.
Mike Dunham?
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just make sure you reset the-
Yeah, I was just about to say, Mike, we're going to reset for you. There we go. Okay, go ahead.
There you go. Thanks so much. Good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Dunham. I'm a lead with Peninsula for Everyone, and I've been following a bunch of the housing elements up and down the Peninsula in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. And I just wanted to put a plus one on some of the comments earlier about affirmatively furthering fair housing. I think you've, if you've been following the housing news, there's more and more talk at the state level about housing strike force, about a housing accountability unit. The state is taking really seriously what it means to affirmatively further fair housing. And I think maps of zoning changes that are only on the periphery of cities and are not showing housing production and upzoning throughout cities are going to be very suspicious. So I'd encourage you all to think about citywide policies and citywide changes that apply to every neighborhood or especially in the most affluent, highest-resourced neighborhoods that have not seen multifamily housing production. The second thing I'd encourage you all to think about is, is taking really seriously what it would take to actually build 6200 below-market-rate units in the city. A number of other cities on the Peninsula are considering citywide affordable housing overlays. Basically, if you are a nonprofit developer wanting to build 100% affordable housing, we will let you do it anywhere in the city. You know, figure out what heights you're willing to tolerate everywhere, what densities you're willing to tolerate anywhere, but give nonprofits a leg up over the private sector. Let them build buy right, let them build multifamily units anywhere in the city. That's a really good way to encourage below-market-rate construction, and it would also affirmatively further fair housing. So I strongly encourage you all to consider such a policy. Thank you.
Kelly Ketchmark?
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a resident of the Wagon Wheel neighborhood for 18 years, and I've been a homeowner for 16. I agree with what many other speakers have said with regards to supporting the staff report. I don't agree that the R3 upzoning should be used to meet the Rena numbers. You may be wondering why so many of us are focusing on R3 tonight, which is one, one mention of the whole report. There's a real concern that there hasn't been much outreach about this or a real understanding by the average resident on what Rena is and what the R3 zone is and how changes to that could greatly impact us. I think that adding increased density does not automatically mean housing prices are going to come down. It's the talking point, and it sounds like a simple economics of supply and demand, but that's often not how it actually plays out in this metro area, because developers are counting on building market-rate housing. Planning for actual affordable housing should be something handled in a different way through our other established processes, like the general plan, precise plans, which can account for traffic and other significant environmental impacts. Thank you.
Bruce England?
Thank you, Mayor Kamai. Council members, hear me okay?
Yes, we do.
I can't hear myself, so I have to just trust it. Yeah, just a few quick things. I know you're fielding a lot of comments here, so yes, I'll try to make it, it fast. On the parking policy, you're hearing a lot of comments on that. I just want to point out that there is a lot, and you know this, there's a lot going on around- around vehicle use, transit, autonomous vehicles, all these moving pieces, micro mobility. And Mountain View is starting to work on their new active transportation plan to help encourage people to not use their cars or other vehicles to get around so much. So having flexibility on the parking policy in any way, I think, is prudent. And that might mean unbundling parking, having different kinds of numbers for parking depending on the location and things like that. Also, this, this is, this goes to the Mountain View MB letter. It's mentioned in there about vehicle residents, and I think that they should be considered in this. They actually live here, even though they're living in vehicles and sometimes in safe parking lots, sometimes at the curbs, but they're, they're residents really, and they should be accounted for and accommodated and new housing opportunities. And then speaking for Green Spaces MV, we are with a strong interest in not seeing trees cut down. So where projects are more densely loaded into our available areas, we want to see as few a number of trees cut down as possible. And we know that there are projects right now being worked on where a lot of trees are being cut down. It's a little distressing. And then to echo the point that others have made about affordable housing being distributed around Mountain View, we definitely would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thanks. Isaac Stone?
Hi, yes, I want to speak to some of the other comments tonight in that a lot of people are mentioning the R3 upzone and how it shouldn't be relied on to meet the Rena numbers. And while I agree with that staff assessment, I want to point out that I'm also in favor of the R3 upzoning. I think that the good things about it, not necessarily just that it will add more density, but it is a move towards form-based zoning and it is really well researched by staff. And I don't think the negativity here today shouldn't mean that that should be shelved. I think all of the residential zoning outside of the mobile home residential zoning should be looked at and moved towards the known best practices in city planning, form-based zoning, impact zoning, and away from the, the old stuff that we inherited. That's all.
Thanks. Riza Singh?
Thank you, Mayor Kamai. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Riza Singh and I live and work in Mountain View. I'd like to strongly support the MVMB letter as well as the comments of Kelsey Baines in reaching out to underserved populations. On the topic of outreach, I think that since a significant portion of Mountain View are renters, I strongly encourage staff to go around to the various apartment complexes and solicit the outreach of the renter population of Mountain View. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Brown?
Finally. Hey, Alex Brown, mobile homeowner, Sagio Villa, North Bay Shore. Timer's not, sorry. Okay, there it is. You know, I want more housing up here and I especially want the grocery store and gym that come with it. But it's not going to come quickly enough, so let's build housing by the existing grocery stores and gyms. Oh, have we looked into building one really big complex downtown by the Caltran Station? Maybe like 50 stories, maybe taller. Could be long too, but not super wide because people deserve windows and natural light is important. Though a courtyard would be cool, you know, with a little park inside. We can lean into the height and shadow, make the whole city a sundial, visible in satellite pictures. We have at least one satellite imagery company in town. They can work with us on that. As for zoning updates, I'm R3D all the way, unless you want to go Universal R4, that's cool too. Preservation is important. Please consider the people living here alongside the people who will live here soon. R3 has already had a lot of net loss projects with residents who were displaced and whose lives have been upended. Amending zoning could and should help the remaining residents wherever possible, but not in such a way that we can't make room for new neighbors. Can we somehow limit real estate speculation and the associated barriers to housing caused by inflated prices? Be nice. Anyway, please just do what you can now so we can maintain some control of the project approval and maybe get fewer buildings that are just a mishmash of cheap EIFS rectangles. They're hideous. I don't know why they're approved. Thanks, Albert. I really miss your simulations. The slides are just not the same. I, that was, that was well under two minutes. I don't know why, yeah. I didn't need her time at all. Thanks.
So I don't see any other hands, so we can bring this back to the council. So before we get into the two questions, I thought we could see if any members of the council have any questions for staff. Just do any members of council have any questions for staff before we get into the two that have been posed tonight? All right, Councilmember Hicks?
Hi, yes, I have a question or two. First, I have a question about net new, net new housing. Table three on page eight shows we've permitted, I think, over eighteen hundred housing units in the three lower income categories, very low, low and moderate income over the past cycle. But we also demolished a lot of, of units in those income brackets. So I'm wondering how many net new lower income units we may have produced?
Yeah, I'll handle that one. Thank you for the question. Just want to clarify your, your data point in table three. We, we've actually approved in that table about four hundred and fifty. Is that what, what you said, four hundred and fifty and low, moderate and very low?
Yeah, maybe I read the wrong cell, but I was trying to add the three together. Anyway, yes. Rec minus six and then whatever number of net new units we may, in affordable units we may have created.
Yeah, so we've, we've through these projects, about six hundred rental units have been demolished over the course of the last Rena cycle. Now, that isn't necessarily VLI, LI and MI units. It could include above moderate households, which unfortunately I don't have the data for. But the, like, to, to answer your question, for these roughly four hundred and fifty units, we have, over the, the course of the Rena, we've demolished about six hundred rental units.
So it's possible we haven't created any new, any net new.
It is possible, yes.
Affordable units or even gone into negative territory? Because your rental, your rent-controlled units are a stand-in for, for those affordability categories.
Right.
Okay, okay, I get that. Thank you. And then I was wondering about your first thoughts on changing the Notice of Funding Availability Process review that was in the staff report. This is, for people who don't know, it's the process for producing affordable housing. Maybe you can explain it better than I can.
I'd like to defer this one to the Community Development Director, Mr. Vastava, who has a little bit more knowledge of the NOFA process than I do.
Councilmember Hicks, could you repeat the question? I just wanted to make sure.
The, the staff report says that there, that staff has some thoughts about changing and of course improving. I, I expect the Notice of Funding Availability Process.
Yes, that is one of the items the Housing Division is going to be looking at. One of the differences between what Mountain View does and other cities do is we start our process very early in the development for affordable housing developers. This is before they even have a project approved. Many other cities do it right alongside or as, as the project is being approved, which sort of elongates the process. And we're looking at some best practices to see if we can streamline ours. Affordable housing developers do like our process because it provides certainty before they design the project for sure. I mean, they're working on concepts in general or before they apply for the planning application. But on the other hand, it, it does add some time because we, we do bring some of the design information to the council and the NOFA committee prior to allocating the funding.
Okay, okay, so shortening the process a little.
Yeah, but it might add the uncertainty back, right? They, they're not sure which projects are going to get funded for how much. So it's a, it's a top, it's a balance.
I see. So I imagine you'll do some outreach and, and make sure that the balance is in the positive direction. Okay. And then last, I wanted a little more detail on, on page five, the staff report says HCD provides guidance on picking sites for low-income units and that they shouldn't be clustered. Now, we've done affordable units through include, through subsidized units and inclusive units. And I think they've been in, in North Bay Shore, East Wisman, Terabella, El Camino, the downtown area, in fact, most of them in the downtown area, I think, and San Antonio. So I'm wondering if, if you cover such a broad, if you're creating affordable housing in such a broad number of areas, is that considered clustering or maybe you can shed a little more light on that concept for me?
Sure, I'll, I'll take a first stab at this and then perhaps one of our consultants can also weigh in. You know, the, the guidance is general and the HCD is going to be looking for the things that we've been saying, which are like access to opportunity areas and that we're not kind of putting all units in, in these areas that are, are, that, that don't have access to services and good jobs and, and access to opportunity. So we are looking at, like you said, a whole range of different areas that may accommodate our lower income units. Our initial thought is that, as you said, the, all of these citywide areas should satisfy those concerns and that we shouldn't need to, for example, upzone in areas, you know, far south of El Camino, for example. But I'll, I'll kick it over to one of our consultants who may be able to provide a little bit more information about that. Matt, go ahead.
Sure, happy to jump in a little bit. Matt Cota with BAE Urban Economics. It, it is indeed guidance. I, I don't think there's any hard and fast rule about, you know, what exactly constitutes an over-concentration of lower income housing. But the idea of dispersing the housing so it's not all concentrated in a single area and being mindful of placing the housing whenever possible in those areas of higher opportunity. As Eric said, places where there's transit access, where there's various resources such as schools, shopping, services of various kinds, recreational opportunities and so forth, that all contribute to the, you know, positive life outcomes for residents is, is really important. So I think with those things in mind, at least initially, it's looking like there, there's good potential to avoid any kind of situation that would, would create concerns in that regard.
I guess another way of phrasing that question is that from reading the staff report, it seems that the history of what you've created is somewhat important in predicting the future. And since we've created affordable housing in such a broad array of places, I'm wondering whether that would be looked on positively for the future that will probably, you know, continue to do that in the future as well.
I, I, I would say so, certainly. And, and a lot of the focus on AFFH is, is really to try to remedy past patterns where there's been segregation and isolation and so forth. And to the extent that you already have a good distribution of locations where your more affordable housing is located, I think that's a positive place to start from and then just continue to, to work on that good distribution of, of housing throughout the community.
Okay, and I actually, oh, Eric, were you going to say something or? No, okay, I actually, I, I'll, I'll go off with one more question. We've been getting messages about possibly having to do twenty dwelling units per acre or thirty dwelling units per acre, depending on how this shakes out in order to encourage or, or show that we're providing sites that are likely to have affordable housing. And I'm wondering whether you can give an example so that we could picture what twenty units per acre or thirty units per acre are, just because that's a little abstract.
Sure, yeah, a really good example of twenty units per acre are, are typical rowhouse developments. Those usually almost always come in at almost exactly twenty units per acre. So any of the recent rowhouse developments that have happened. Thirty units per acre, we don't see very many projects at that density because it's kind of this transitional density between, you know, the, the profitable rowhouse density and, and kind of what's next profitable, which is probably the sixty to seventy dwelling units per acre level. But in the past, we have seen a lot of projects at about thirty units per acre. So thinking about many of the apartments along California Street in the Rangstorf area are approximately thirty units per acre.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for this presentation and the staff report, very comprehensive. You know, I, I, I think we've all gathered that we're doing well in terms of market rate units at three hundred and forty-five percent. So it seems like our real task is to try to shift some of that to more affordable units. And I guess I was hoping to get a little bit more description about or how we might be able to do that. Someone mentioned the, an out, overlay, affordable housing overlay. Is that possible in light of the no clustering requirement? And what are the other strategies? Like, are we able to zone certain parcels for, you know, higher than the fifteen percent inclusionary zoning requirement, inclusionary housing that we have right now? How do we do that given, you know, I've been, I've pushed for higher than twenty percent in certain areas that been told it's not feasible. So just if, hoping to get a little bit more clarity on the real, the real possibilities, I guess, of being able to meet our affordable unit requirements. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo your concern. There are a lot of challenges in meeting these affordable housing goals. A lot of them are funding challenges. So where is there national funding available, state funding available? And there is kind of a catch-22 where if we increase the BMR requirements on market rate projects, it makes them less feasible. So, and we don't want to reduce our all-housing production if, if the benefit for affordable housing is limited. So, but I do, you know, there, there are a lot of strategies out there. I'm, I know that our Housing Division is working on a number of them. But on the question of affordable housing overlay, we'd have to see how that would further the existing incentives that we have for affordable housing. For example, we recently adopted a density bonus ordinance that allows the council to set 100% affordable projects at any density. We also have a NOFA process that allows 50% affordable projects to bypass the gatekeeper process so they can come in on industrial sites or commercial sites without having to wait for the gatekeeper. So those are the types of things that we'd have to see if like an affordable housing overlay would provide any additional benefits over this, those things that we already have. Go ahead, Artie.
Oh, I, I'll just piggyback onto what Eric said. You know, currently our density bonus ordinance focuses on NOFA projects. So we in effect have an overlay through our density bonus ordinance where the council can grant, you know, much higher densities beyond what's allowed on the site if projects are 100% affordable. And then in, in response to your question, Councilmember. And then in in response to your question, Councilmember Abi Koga. About is it possible to to incentivize maybe, maybe a better way would be to incentivize. Projects that provide higher affordability with with greater density. That's one way of doing it instead of requiring their all projects provided. Maybe that's one way we could look at it so that we're not causing a specific constraint on all housing. But we are rewarding projects with that provide greater density. State density bonus already does that. We have the bonus FAR process in our precise plan. So I think we have to make sure that we're not. We're not just duplicating what we've already done because I think we have a lot already. And then finally, I think by incentivizing the the. Meeting BMR requirements through providing sites to the city, even though it doesn't provide units can can provide certainty. So those sites can certainly be focused on low income housing. And so that's what we are using in our pipeline projects. We're only looking at sites that for sure are going to be built at. Affordable levels. So those are ways in which I think cities can. Make sure that we are targeting sites specifically for lower densities.
So is that the land dedication?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
The land dedication program.
Okay, thank you. So um, how I guess, how does this work? Let's say there's a parcel now that we. We designate or pick out as potential for affordable housing development. But it's zoned. Our our three, I don't know all the zones, but let's say it's zoned for twen- twenty units an acre right now. Do we have to specify that, you know, I think we're up to like a hundred and twenty units an acre and some sites we're looking at. But potentially, if that's possible in this site for affordable housing, do we have to indicate that? Or can we do that after the fact? Because, you know, my concern or the issue there is. The land prices, right? They're they're very expensive. The more we upzone, the more expensive the land gets. So how do we strategize to keep land, you know, somewhat reasonable or or reachable, affordable? But then be able to put down the units that we really need to meet meet our goals or our requirements.
That's a very insightful concern that you have. And I think that we, our first step is in that is to rely on existing zoning. As much as we can because that's already been broadcast to the market. And so the housing element, just relying on existing zoning, won't change any of those market forces. If we do need to identify targeted upzoning, I think we can. Kind of work with our consultants to see if there are ways to provide. Ways to limit any speculative effects that that might have. And, you know, there are the the pros and cons of of, you know, telegraphing less information. You know, one one pro is that we're more certain to get HCD approval for using that site. But of course, the con, like you said, there could be negative speculative effects. So we're going to have to weigh those. In the as we determine if additional sites need to be rezoned.
I'll just add that cities have a little more time to rezone. Typically, it's three years. That could be reduced to one year. So you do have a little time after adoption of the housing element. To rezone sites. So once, if we identify specific sites, we don't have to rezone them by the adoption of the housing element. It could be a subsequent, but it has to be done by the city and and not the applicant, so.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Does any other member, oh, perfect, Vice Mayor Ramirez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. So first, we've had a tremendous number of. Emails and public comments about the R three zoning district update. And I know staff have. Are doing the outreach in a very different way. And I'm hoping that you can share with us and the public what your strategy will be. To solicit community input moving forward.
Sure, yeah, thanks for that opportunity, Vice Mayor. So we are currently planning for early twenty twenty-two, a series of six community outreach meetings. In each of the CNC neighborhoods where we are going to get input about the R three update. From residents targeted to those neighborhoods. That's. Our our kind of next big task for the R three update. In addition, we'll we'll continue to do analysis about concerns that we've heard, such as transitions. And adjacencies and and other such issues before we bring back any new proposals to council. In the next year.
Great, thank you. Planning Commissioner Kaprilis had, I thought, a very good suggestion. Not everybody might be informed about the current development standards. Will the outreach include some education about where the R three zoning already is? And what the development standards currently are?
Yeah, absolutely. That that's and and lots of diagrams and and things so that people can really understand. What's proposed and what's existing.
Great, thank you. I'm I'm very pleased that staff is doing that. Now, we have, I think, Councilmember Hicks spoke to this. We've we've seen several R three properties. Redeveloped over the past decade. And I remember among the elements that we have to include in our analysis is a sort of. The trends of what's occurring with existing housing stock, housing preservation, I think, is one of the the goals of the housing element. To what extent has what we've seen with R three already happened? To what extent does that inform the work that staff is doing for the housing element moving forward?
So there there are, you know, a few projects the council has asked staff to work on related to this issue. One of them is the anti-displacement strategy, which is happening in parallel to the housing element update. And you'll be getting more information about that process in the in the coming months. The the housing element itself can include high level policies and programs. That will be developed through the anti-displacement strategy. And can be encoded in our general plan through this housing element update. In addition, through our RENA process, we are proposing to focus on sites. That have no or very few, you know, like a single family home or duplex, existing units on those sites. We want to make sure that whatever sites we're identifying in the RENA, we are displacing as few residents as possible. As well as making sure that we're getting the net new units that we need to. In order to accommodate our our RENA and and demolishing units that reduces that effect.
Okay, I I guess, if you reframing the the question a little bit, will we identify as a concern? The, I guess, the the fact or the reality that many of these older naturally affordable. Rent-controlled units are at the end of their useful lives. Many of those buildings are at the end of their those, at their useful lives. So we need to think about strategies to respond to that. That some, that analysis that goes into or in any way influences the housing element work.
Absolutely. We do need to have policies and programs to support rehabilitation, to support maintenance. Of existing units. I would also say that, you know, most of the apartments in Mountain View are about fifty years old. You know, there are that are significantly older than that, but fifty years old doesn't necessarily need to be the end of a building's useful life. And so we are looking at, we can definitely look at policies to encourage their their preservation and maintenance. As well.
Yeah, great, thank you. And then we also received many comments about amenities and services. And infrastructure that I think the community reasonably expects, whatever how the production occurs. And I I got a question also about whether the the reach codes, for instance, would would apply. All of the regulations that we have in place now will remain enforced. As this housing gets built, right? So the parkland dedication requirements will remain in place. We will identify any infrastructure impacts through the sequel analysis. All of that will occur. And the the housing element doesn't just look at housing production, but also includes the whole package of. Amenities and services and infrastructure that's necessary to make sure that the housing is, you know. Is well served. Is that right?
Yes, you're absolutely right. We are going through a sequel process where we will identify potential impacts to public services. And transportation and and, you know, other typical sequel impacts. That information will be coming probably in about eight or nine months from now. And there will be a public draft for the community to review and an opportunity for council to weigh that information in their decision. I do want to say that with respect to parkland dedication. You know, we've certainly heard from the community and from developers that the parkland dedication fee is is high relative to our peers. And we do want to. We don't want to pull any, any. The the housing element will need to identify constraints which could include fees. It doesn't necessarily mean that the housing element will mandate changes to those fees, but we do need to do that analysis.
Understood. And then last question. General plan hasn't allowed for some residential capacity in certain commercial areas. But the zoning doesn't allow for that residential development to occur. As part of the housing element. Will staff include preliminary suggestions or plans for how to approach those? Those areas in the general plan where there might be some residential capacity, but the zoning doesn't align with the general plan.
That would depend on if we need to identify additional sites to accommodate our RENA. And if council directs staff to look at those commercial areas for those additional sites. If that's the case, then some high level guidance would be appropriate for how to address that. If the housing element. Does not include or it does not require those commercial areas. For the RENA. That information could be provided in our high level policy and programs section. But it is also. It would be less imperative for us to kind of put that work into the. Developing those those programs, policies and guidance.
Great, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle Walter.
Thanks. A lot of, a lot of my questions have been have been answered, but I'm sure they'll come up again in the in the deliberation section. But one of the things that we've always had a great deal of trouble with is producing moderate rate housing. I mean, quite literally, we we produced eighteen units in the last RENA cycle. And we're asked, being asked to produce eighteen hundred and eighty-five. That's that's a hundred times. What we've produced. So could you talk a little bit about how we're going to? To do that? And. What what are some strategies that you think might help?
Well, I think the first strategy is to see what all of the great work that council has already done on this issue. And see how it actually plays out. You know, there are a couple of projects in the pipeline that are adding a significant number. Of moderate income units, like the seven 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 Middlefield project. The, in addition, when we updated our BMR code. We included a two income requirement for projects. With the express intent of providing a higher diversity of income levels. And and maybe trying to get some of those moderate income units as well. Additional efforts, I I'm going to have to see if the community development director has any additional thoughts on on what. The housing division may be doing.
The housing division is actually working on a proposal by. A group, a JPA that the city joined that may be looking to acquire existing apartment units. Indeed restricting them for moderate housing or maybe lower housing. You know, and until a recent state law was passed, we couldn't have counted existing units. But now that the law has passed, we can if they're deed restricted. So this would look at deed restricting the units and and depending on how many units we get. We could add to the moderate income or the affordable housing inventory.
Well, that's very interesting. Thanks. I'm glad to hear about that. And then I have another question. A Mountain View is really not very biz big physically. We're we're, you know, twelve square miles. So when you talk about, and I remember when when we were looking at public transit. The the, the definition of public transit was, I think, a half a mile from a bus stop or other public transit. And and the whole city qualified. So, which even though we all know that the public transit here really isn't that great. It's still still, the whole city qualified as access to public transit. So I wonder, do we have any real guidance on how the. The state is going to look at the idea of clumping of affordable housing, given that. I mean, it's certainly not on every block in Mountain View, but it it is distributed throughout our community. Is this viewed as, is what we have currently viewed as as good? Or do we know that? I I'm very concerned about. About the affordable, I I mean, about the fair housing. It seems like, you know, that's something that we. We've really come to. Be concerned about in the last two years. And so in previous reading cycles, we didn't necessarily look at it, at least. With that lens, and now we are. So I guess what I'm asking is, how does our track record? Of producing affordable housing throughout the the city match with what the state is looking for?
Yeah, I'll start and then I'll 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 throw it to Matt. I I'd just like to reinforce what you said about this, the city size, which is a really, really good point. On this, you know, you think about some of the other bigger cities in our region. And they have areas of low opportunity that are bigger than Mountain View. Like the whole area is, you know, the whole. Areas of of poor access to opportunity are are sometimes many times bigger than the city of Mountain View. And so kind of thinking about it in that lens is maybe helpful. But I also want to moderate expectations. And I hopefully, I think Matt can provide that information.
Sure. So we've already talked a little bit about how existing affordable housing is is kind of scattered. Various locations throughout the community. So that's a great starting point. AB six eighty-six is the state law that created the requirement that we include the assessment of fair housing. In the housing element update. And within that legislation, there was direction to. And within that legislation, there was direction to do some analysis of these patterns of segregation, isolation within the community. And there's a, a concept or a metric called racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. There's some math that you do in order to look at objectively whether you have segregation of various racial or ethnic groups or isolation of certain racial or ethnic groups within the community. And that would be kind of an assessment of your existing conditions. And if we go through that process and, and we're sort of using those tools, we identify that there are some, some issues from a quantifiable standpoint, then we're going to need to incorporate some policies or programs within the housing element to address that. And part of that would, I would imagine, would involve looking at how we can identify those sites for additional lower income housing development in ways that do not exacerbate those kind of patterns, but actually help to ameliorate or mitigate them. So we do have some objective measures to, to look at and to help guide that process. And that's all kind of laid out in A B six eighty-six and, and the A F H guidance that, that H C D's put out. So we'll be following that and keeping an eye to make sure that we are not creating any problems and hopefully making improvements in that distribution of, of housing throughout the community.
So essentially what you're saying is that's an analysis that's going to be done as part of this process and we haven't done it yet.
Yes, it is forthcoming.
Thank you. Okay. That's my question. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Any other council members with questions? All right. Seeing no other hands raised, maybe we can get into the questions that were being asked in the study session. So I'm gonna do my best along with staff to keep track. So there's two questions. You know, one of them is, does the city council have any comments regarding new key housing element requirements related to the following? The arena approach and sites inventory and the constraints to housing. And question two, does the city council support the initial list of draft housing element policy topics? Are there other policy topics that should be included? And so I will keep track along with staff. And if you could answer both questions, one and two, that would be really helpful. Great. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciating the time. I'm gonna try and be brief. I know we were supposed to start the regular session at six thirty, so there's a lot to say. This is a meaty item and I'm glad to see that there's a, a lot of community attention to it. I also know that while there's a lot I want to say, I feel like this particular item is fairly narrowly scoped. So if other members of the council speak to some of those things, I might come back for a second term. But right now I'm primarily going to respond to these two questions. So first, I feel like staff is on the right track. I support the staff approach, the recommendations to basically do everything we have to do to rebate in compliance with state law. I, I don't think there's, there's a, a lot of discretion that we have in, you know, avoiding some of the, the, the new provisions, the no net loss requirements and affirmatively furthering fair housing. And in fact, personally, I, I think those are good things. I think especially for bad accuracies that historically have not made any real attempt to, to meet the arena obligation. I think these are good laws and I see them as an opportunity for us also to help achieve our own housing goals. So I'm, I, I don't have a lot to add. If anything, I do feel on the constraint side, I appreciate the staff analysis about the Mountain View Whiteman School District, Community Facilities District. I feel personally uncomfortable thinking too much about that because I live in the Los Altos school district part of Mountain View. I couldn't even, you know, if it were a district wide vote, I, I wouldn't even, even be able to participate in that discussion. But I would frame it a little bit differently. I feel like there's not much or anything that the city can do about a school district decision, but we should be, I think, transparent about our own fees and taxes and, you know, process constraints that impede housing production. And I feel like, you know, we might, if the school district proceeds with that and the voters approve it, we might have to make some tough decisions. And that will include looking at our own, you know, fees and taxes and development standards and processes and that kind of thing. And making changes to offset whatever impacts the C F D might have. So I feel like that's an important thing for us to truly understand and I hope that there's a robust analysis included when you're evaluating government imposed constraints in particular. On the second question, everything in there looks very good. I think all of those are issues that are of concern to the community, all things that we, we need to be mindful of. Just a couple of other things that I would like to see maybe fleshed out or, or developed. The, you know, I, I know, and we're not talking about R three, but we do have a history of displacement that, that has occurred through redevelopment under our existing development standards. And I think it's very important for us to, again, be transparent in identifying those, you know, what, what regulations exist now that have led to the redevelopment of existing properties and the displacement of generally, you know, low and, and moderate income people. So by identifying those challenges and then coming up with solutions as I know staff is already doing to, to mitigate those impacts. I think that's, that's critical. I, I, I feel like that would be a high priority for me personally. I also feel like community outreach is critical. We're making some very difficult decisions. You know, I, I, the previous arena cycles were probably tough then too, but we're talking about in order of magnitude more units we have to, we have to plan for. And, and much more stringent regulations to make sure we're on track to meet those targets. So really delving into, especially in targeting, targeting populations that historically maybe haven't been approached and understanding their housing needs would be, I think, very beneficial for this process. So in particular, Eric, I, I think I sent you an email with some suggestions for, for groups that we might want to talk to. I have a particular interest in focusing on low income people, people of color, renters who I feel like have, you know, a lot to, to contribute and on our own understanding of our community's housing needs. So those groups, we've had many people who have been displaced. And I think it would be interesting to hear from them about the, you know, the concerns that they have about our housing policies. We've been doing a lot of work to reach out to unhoused people in our community. And I think it's important to get their perspective as well. And I feel like we also can align with other work that's being done. I'm remembering in the Human Relations Commission work plan, there are several housing related items, including, you know, collecting stories from unhoused people in our community. Why not use that as an opportunity to get, you know, some information that we could put into our housing element and respond to the state mandate, you know, to, to conduct this kind of robust outreach? So I think those are, those are things that we, we should look at very seriously. And I'm sure every member of the council is, is, you know, able to share particular stakeholder or community groups that might be able to, to help us, you know, reach out to groups that historically have not been involved in these kinds of efforts. So that's all I've got for now, but so far I think a great start and I appreciate the work that you're doing on this, this difficult topic. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Hicks.
Yes, I, I, I'll start off by saying I agree particularly with, with what the vice mayor said in general, but particularly the last comments on making sure to do outreach to low income community groups, people of color and others who, who possibly have been overlooked in outreach in the past. As I think most of my comments are addressing the second question. So I'll just say, as for the first question, I just wanted to thank staff and compliment them for, you know, the, the basic framework that was presented in the staff report is something that I, that I liked very much and look forward to see going forward. As for the second question on policy topics that should be included, you know, it's a very comprehensive, maybe two, two pages of policy comments or topics that I, that I also agreed with. I just wanted to say, I think the elephant in the room is housing affordable to very low, low and moderate income households. And I'm not the first person who's said that. Other council members have said that in the questions and also E P C members. But I wanted to highlight it because we've permitted, I guess, according to the table on page eight, we've permitted, permitted three and a half times our arena objectives for upper income households and a quarter of, I think, of what we were, what we targeted for the various lower income groups. And we may have even created net zero units. So it's not that we just need to focus more on affordable housing. It's that, you know, this is a, a dramatic and daunting difference, I would say. And, and I think we have to be really clear on that. It looks like almost ninety percent of the units we've permitted are for higher income people. And then again, if, if there's net zero lower income units, that would make it a hundred percent. So, you know, we're not a city that avoids producing housing. We're a city that produces a good amount, but we, I'm not, we preserve, produce little to no net positive affordable housing. So I would like to make that explicitly one of our goals. It's not, and one of our prime focuses. It's not currently listed, I think, as one of our goals. And another way to put it is to focus on the, the racial and ethnic aspects of this problem. Our, the twenty twenty census showed that our Latinx population is down by twelve percent. And that's not just dropping because the, as a percentage, because the population is growing. That's, it shows about a little bit under two thousand individuals. In other words, individuals less than we had ten years ago. And the highest growth in our county is in Gilroy and Morgan Hill. And, and that's where the, as these populations who are being displaced, that's generally where they're going, there and south of here. So, and, and many of those people are still driving here for jobs. And they're not driving here in Teslas. So, you know, they're driving here in, in cars often with very large carbon footprints. So, so that would be, you know, undermining our sustainability goals as well as housing goals. So some of the things I would like to look into and other people have said them are hiring staff, looking at streamlining, but I want, want to remind everybody that there, there's streamlining and streamlining. The most recent streamlining we found did away with affordable housing units. So I want to make sure that, that streamlining doesn't mean going so fast that we're not careful in terms of meeting our objectives, including affordable housing. In terms of affordable, so I'm, I'm very interested in taking a deeper dive on displacement, affordable housing production. I want to look at, at funding in particular because honestly, I think that's, that's the reason. I don't think we're unwilling to produce affordable housing. I really think it's funding that's stopping us. And I would do, like to do legislative advocacy was mentioned. I would like to do legislative advocacy around that. And legislative advocacy around supplying city infrastructure, whether it's schools or parks or other things as we grow, because I think we're, we're having trouble fulfilling those goals. I'm also, in addition to funding to provide affordable housing, I'm interested in alternative forms of housing like community land trusts. One of our residents brought up mixed income cohousing that as a way of, of possibly producing more affordable housing. I'd like to look into the tenant opportunity to purchase and maybe loan a streamlined A D U process with loans so that people can, or, or units accompanying S B nine loans that allow people to actually build the housing that that, those zoning changes have enabled. One of the, the policy topics is diversity, equity and inclusion. And I would like under that to emphasize local workers and families, not just tech workers as one of the, the aspects of, of diversity that we want to maintain. There, there was also a policy topic on data and I would love to have a data dashboard that allows us to see how my, how, what our goals are, how we're meeting them at all different income levels, including housing for the currently homeless and also how we compare to other cities. And lastly, I'll just name a list of places that we could look to, sites we could look at to produce more housing and affordable housing. One is the Caltrain V T A site. I think that the, the, a similar site in San, the city of Santa Clara just fell through. If there's a way to speed up development of that site, you know, it's virtually on top of transit and hopefully we could go, you know, a little higher than we have in the past in that area. Another is, I think the E P C brought this up, but low density shopping plazas that could be zoned, rezoned for mixed income instead of just shopping. There's West Terabella, there's the Margaret Capri is on the E P C, mentioned one story offices around El Camino Hospital could become mixed use. There's the Moffett Precise Plan. Maybe exploring taller buildings in targeted areas. And lastly, more city lots downtown, like the police, the very large police lot or the lot that we looked at for the parking garage if we transferred the parking to the police lot. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Michelle Walter.
Well, I would particularly like to thank Councilmember Hicks for that list that she just gave us. Many of the things that she came up with were things that I wanted to mention. In particular, I feel like some of the commercial strip malls that we have are good, real, really have good potential for mixed use with significant housing on them. And that is something that would require rezoning because most of them are currently not zoned for that. But we heard all of the people pretty much who spoke to us said that they, they liked the, they supported the, the staff report and they really supported the suggestion of not using R three. I, I would concur with that, but I think that one of the things that, so, so for question one, my answer is, is definitely yes. I think that the, the, the staff has done an excellent job in describing this and I, I'm really pleased to see, you know, the, the thoughtful approach that's been taken. But I, I do really like the other sites that, that Councilmember Hicks has mentioned. I think that particularly with the need to get the thirty percent kind of cushion, we, we'll, we'll need to do some of that. Then the other thing I really wanted to talk about is public outreach. We've, we've heard almost everybody who spoke to us, talked to us about the housing element and R three. These are the two things, the two rezoning things that are in everybody's mind together in our community. And I really, I, I, I think that we should use this opportunity to educate the public about both of them at the same time if we can. I know that they're on, they're on a different schedule. The housing element comes first. But I think that it's really important to educate on both at the same time because, because they're, they're both very related to increasing housing. And, and there's a lot of questions. So I think, you know, that right now we're, we're in a sense putting off the R three discussion. And I, I, I think that that's maybe reducing the level of trust that the community has. in how good a job we're going to do with that. So I think we need to make sure that that is, you know, that is brought up in as the, as part of the background information that is shared at all of these public meetings. The other thing I really would like to suggest is that we consider having a task force of stakeholders to help us work on the housing element and the R three. I know that we're having, we're we're scheduling a lot of public meetings and and of course, that's valuable. But when people come to one public meeting, they get, they they typically don't necessarily have to do any homework. They come to one, one public meeting, they they, you know, they participate, they give their comments. And then they go home and you never hear from them again, or you often don't. When you have a task force, you have people who come to multiple meetings and learn in each one of them. And I think we have the sustainability task force as a, you know, of an incredible example of the, really the rich income and assistance we got in the process. So I want to mention that as something that I would really like staff to consider is is what would it take to have a a task force on these two issues? And, you know, do we have time to do this, particularly with the R three? I mean, particularly with 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 the time scale that we have for the the housing element, which is, you know, very, very discreet. Anyway, so so question one, I I really applaud the 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 staff. Thank you for the thoughtful report. And question two. I think this is a very thorough list, but I like the addition of other places and to look. And I also would like people to think about a task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Madacek?
Thank you. So in general, I agree with staff's recommendations on the approach to identifying the sites to meet Rena. But I do want to call out a few things in particular. And the first is, I agree with staff as well as lots of members of the public who have emailed us or come here tonight to participate, saying that they are not supportive of using the R three project that we have going to accommodate sites for Rena. And I completely agree with that. I think the general plan zoning, precise plans we've done have been put together with a great deal of thought and a great deal of public input. And that rigor has not been done yet on the R three rezoning. So I'm not supportive of using that. It's very discouraging to hear residents say that they don't feel like their comments were included in the summaries from the community outreach meetings. And this is not the first time I've heard that. When I was on the planning commission, I would attend some of those meetings. And I I felt like the summaries were definitely missing a lot of public input. And so I want to make sure all public input is captured at the meetings that we hold, whether it be for R three or any other topic. We do have diverse opinions in the community and we need to hear them all. I am concerned about the outreach we do for R three. While I think it's important to talk about specific areas with, when you're in that community or that neighborhood, there are a lot of people who are very interested in the entire city. They don't just stay in their neighborhood. So I think it's important to talk about R three throughout the entire community when we do the individual outreach to the neighborhood groups. Let's see, I also want to note that, well, I've already said I don't want to look at rezoning. I, in particular, do not want to look at rezoning any industrial. We need to make sure that we preserve our industrial base. And, you know, I don't want us to become a city that's a hundred percent housing. We need a mix of land uses. And I I feel like we have been chipping away a little bit at our industrial base, and I don't want to do that. Let's see, I also want to make a few comments about the or share my concern about the proposed Community Facilities District or Melrose District. Proposed by the Mountain View Wisman School District are being considered by them. You know, I think we all agree that having a great neighborhood school really adds to a neighborhood. But we also have a lot of other things that make for a great neighborhood. Parks, retail nearby, a nice place to walk, nature. You know, services nearby. And all of that, especially in some areas, doesn't exist. And so you are building the infrastructure along with the residential uses, along with all of these other things. So I feel like we really need the city and the school district to work together on this. So that we don't end up in a situation where the fees, taxes, special taxes, whatever you want to call these, are such that it really halts the development of residential. We have put so much thought and consideration into our precise plans in North Bay Shore and East Wisman. It really would be a shame to have those not come to fruition because of an extra tax. So I really want to make sure we all work together on this so that we see the vision come to fruition that we all have in mind. In terms of the second question. There are definitely, you know, that this was definitely a long list, a comprehensive list, I think. I don't have anything to add to it. But there are some that are particularly important to me, and actually, there's quite a few. So I wasn't going to list them all. I just went through and I numbered them, so I'm just going to tell you the numbers. Is that okay? One, three, four, five, six. Nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Those are really important to me, and so I put those at higher priority. Some of the other ones, I feel like, you know, maybe if we don't get to them, that's okay. But those are really important, I think, to address. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again to staff and consultants for this report. I I go a lot of what my colleagues have already said. I I don't have anything to add in terms of the list. I guess for me, well, number one, I guess I'll start by saying, as Councilmember Hicks has mentioned. You know, I I believed it and I'm glad that we see it. And and other, the rest of the, you know, the area, Bay Area, wherever you want to talk about it, is also seeing it too. That Mountain View has never shied away from housing. We have always built housing or allowed for the development of housing. And, you know, as we see in this Rena cycle, you know, we are going to exceed our overall numbers. I believe this isn't the only cycle where we've done that. So, you know, frankly, I'm glad that that's finally being acknowledged. So, you know, thank, good, thank you to staff, thanks to, you know, our community, our council for for continuing to push forward. I will say that, you know, this round, as I started hearing about what our number was going to be. I was frankly skeptical. I'm still a little bit skeptical. So I'm really quite amazed and pleased that staff has come back to us, saying that we think we can, you know, figure out where we're going to put these units. Which I think is a huge achievement, given that the number is, this number, this round is four times larger than our past round. And I I believe, is it, we're number three, is it in the county based on population? I think that, I appreciate the staff's letter. I hope everyone, including, you know, our our public members read the letter that was submitted earlier this year. We did not appeal our number as most, I think there were something like twenty eight cities that did. You know, we accepted the numbers, but I think the letter really provides a lot of information and detail that really supports frankly, my, some of my skepticism towards this whole, this frankly, the process. And and I've had the benefit of serving from, working on the state, how state housing legislation through a MTC APAG committee, where I provided a lot of comments about the, just the challenges of what the state was bringing down, putting down and bringing down to, to require, in terms of requirements for local governments. And this this year, serving on MTC, I've had a, another window to seeing what is happening and going on in terms of the Plan Bay Area, these housing elements. And frankly, you know, I, so I really wanted to focus on some of the constraints and hopes of us as a, I would say, I call ourselves good actors in terms of, you know, housing production development. And yet, despite us being, you know, I think, good actors, the continuous challenges of reaching these, frankly, I'm kind of, I'm starting to think unrealistic goals. And the reason why I say that is because even though we can, you know, reach our overall numbers, it's really about affordability, and I appreciate that every folks, most folks have mentioned that. And I mean, I've been seeing that too. I think it was a few months back when I just did a, you know, calculation and and came up with the fact that our affordability requirement is about, I think, forty percent of the total. And when we have something, when we have fifteen percent inclusionary, which is on the high side for this Bay Area. We're doing a lot of affordable housing projects. And I, you know, would mention that, right, there's now a program that's tracking all of the cities and how much housing, affordable housing production is being done. And we're number six out of the Bay Area with our, I forget, I think we had eighty three units that were built. But we're number six and they they're taking the top fifteen. And and whoever comes into, in that top fifteen is supposed to get more housing, affordable housing funds. So, you know, we're, we're doing a good job compared to the rest of the Bay Area. And yet, you know, these numbers are pretty hard to achieve. And so I am, my hope is that we can use our situation as an example to do the advocacy, someone else mentioned advocacy, at the state level to kind of, you know, to really sort of highlight how challenging they have made these requirements. They're really pretty unachievable without the funding, and that's the caveat. I think if we had funding, we could probably achieve these goals. But we, the funding is not there now. I currently now serve on the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, which was created by an assembly bill to come up with ways to fund affordable housing. The idea was to do a ballot measure in twenty twenty two. Polling came out saying that it wasn't going to pass. So twenty twenty four is the earliest that they, we can even think about something. So that's three years away plus administering. It's about halfway into this cycle. So what do we do in the meantime, is the question? So that is my hope, is that we can use our, you know, situation as a example of what the real challenges are and to kind of hi, and to highlight that and to see if we can get either assistance or changes made that make this all more realistic. I, you know, I'll go to the schools issue. I understand the challenges with the school district's proposal or possible proposal for Melrose. But I, you know, I will say, I applaud the school district for trying to come up with a strategy where they're taking, you know, they're taking the issue into their own hands. I think as a city, we have done a lot and we will continue to do a lot to try to work with the school districts to find ways to meet their needs. But, you know, we've tried and frankly, it's, it's difficult. You know, if you ask me, if someone said a public comment was about, well, we should come up with a, you know, a strong strategy for how to resource schools. You know, that's been the million dollar question for many, many years, and so far, nobody's come up with it. You know, I would say, if you ask me, we could go back to the state fees. But, you know, that the four dollars that they're, that they're given right now could be, you know, could be upped, I would say. But there's been a lot of lobbying efforts not to do that. So the state, frankly, we, you know, we've talked about doing that to advocate to our state legislators to increase that fee and have been told that, you know, frankly, it's never going to happen. So what do we do? And and this is a real serious need. The last item, there's many more issues we could talk about, is transit and transportation, another constraint. And I will say this, you know, this is something that I've been working on this year with my role at at MTC. I've discovered, being new, so others have known this, but I just recently discovered that like frankly, in other situations, the South Bay, Santa Clara County is a donor county. And to the other nine Bay Area counties in the, in in our region. And so we're not getting our fair share of transit. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion about formulas and how to allocate the funding. There's been, I think, traditionally looking at ridership, current ridership and putting more money into where the current writers are and not as much about where the growth can be. And I think that's really disadvantage, disadvantageous for Santa Clara County because we are the largest county, we are the county that's growing, and yet, we're not getting the dollars. And I think these issues are real issues that need to be highlighted because unless we get the resources we need, we're not going to be able to achieve these, you know, these requirements or goals that are being placed on us. And so my hope and my ask is that we can begin to, you know, tell our story in that fashion. And I'm glad that we have our new firm that's helping us with advocacy. I met with them and talked about issues and we talked a lot about these topics. And the hope is, is that we can do more of that advocacy at the state level to really then, you know, come up with a real plan that is frankly realistic. Because I just don't see it right now, how we're going to for, achieve our affordable housing requirements with what we have at this time. I will, also just a quick comment on R three. I do agree with staff's assessment and I appreciate the public for coming forward today. You know, when we talked about R three, my biggest concern was that, that we hadn't really gone out to the public to explain to them what we are doing. I I think some of that is happening and that's why we're starting to hear from folks. This is a, you know, big change, and so I think the entire city community needs to hear about it and know about it. But to be frank, you know, I, as in terms of how we move forward, I'm actually thinking, you know, this is a little off the top topic, but I think somewhat relevant, that as we move forward, it probably should be looking at our general plan. And with it coming up on ten years, reviewing it to see, you know, what we can update. I'll say to Councilmember Hicks, I appreciate her, you know, mentioning some sites in the El Camino Plan. I I haven't read it in a long time, but I remember, you know, we had created these centers, centers or, you know, sent, sent gathering places, and they were the shopping centers along El Camino. And we did them those for mixed use, but so far, you know, nothing's come to fruition. And I've heard that the one on Grant Road, there was talk about housing development there, but I don't know what happened. So, you know, maybe we need to look at those plans again and just double down and see what we need to do to really incentivize fruition of these, these strategies that we created. And I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to keep this very short, because I think that everything has been said. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try to keep this very short, um, cause I think that everything has been said. Um, I think that staff has done a very good job of, of navigating this and presenting us with the, the beginning of, um, the process that we have. Um, it's not an easy thing. Um, and I know that we talk a lot as council about, uh, sustainability and our response to uh, the climate crisis and that's really part and parcel of what this is all about. Is, is a state, are we going to build out into greenbelt areas? Or are we going to constrain ourselves to being near transportation and in compact, uh, communities? And there, there isn't a way to, um, uh, to not make it one of those options. It's one or the other. Um, so some things that I am very interested in, um, in understanding more about the affordable housing zoning overlays, what those would give us and if we had an overlay that was the entire city, um, what that would give us. It's very clear to me and, and I think that Councilmember Hicks, um, really elucidated this as well. That, uh, with, when you factor in the loss of affordable housing, um, we have not really been, um, in the bottom line producing the affordable housing, anything like what we need. Um, and it's, it's hard too because, uh, a lot of folks that we heard from tonight were saying, let's listen to the current residents of Mountain View and I agree with that very, very much. But we also have to factor in, uh, the needs of, uh, home care and childcare and elder care workers and our future education workers, um, our, our healthcare workers, um, because they are the individuals who would have been, um, in the affordable housing that's not there. Um, I'm hoping that we can look for more ways to accelerate ADUs. Uh, Santa Cruz County has a very good program of, um, making it easier for homeowners to create ADUs and, um, helping them to find tenants who, um, qualify for affordable housing. Um, I think that we need more housing for single adults. Um, it's not gonna work in the long term to keep people in portables or in six-month-long programs. I would like to see us, um, really, uh, amplify ELI as a category. I, I think that's very much, uh, needed, not that we need to ascribe specific target numbers to it. But I, I think that we do need to amplify that as, uh, the important category that it is. And I absolutely think that we have to, um, really push on the issue of uh, housing for, um, individuals with, uh, developmental and intellectual disabilities. Um, because there is such a positive of, of housing in that area and, um, it's, it's something that has really gotten to a critical, um, point. Um, I hope that as we go through this process, we can get some data from labor organizations um, and from the community organizations, uh, about the housing needs that they see uh, for our critical workforce, almost all of whom are lower income individuals. Uh, so those are just my comments for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I think everyone had an opportunity to provide, um, comments to questions, uh, one and two. Um, and I think before I summarize, I'll try to, to give mine. Um, so for, for question one, I want to echo the, the thanks to staff and our consultants for all their, all their hard work. And, um, also appreciate staff sending the letter to, to MTC. I know that this is kind of the preliminary phase and we haven't received a, uh, um, a response from MTC A-BAG. Um, but, uh, appreciate staff being proactive and letting them know, um, kind of, uh, Mountain View's perspective. Um, and, um, want to echo that I, I feel like the direction that staff is going in with both the, um, kind of the key elements for the housing element as well as the initial policy topics, I think are the right direction to kind of tackle the, the large number that we have before us. I'm really grateful too for the website that staff put together, mvhousingelement.org. Think it's really great to have one repository with all of the videos and all of the links and all of the information. And then what I was impressed with was, you know, I think the city has made concerted efforts to be, um, multilingual as well as multi-ability. And I saw a lot on the website that was um, in various languages and very, various, um, uh, ability levels. And so really wanna, um, compliment and thanks to often share with the public if you're not aware of that website existing, that it is quite helpful. Um, you know, I remember looking at the housing element back as a planning commissioner. Um, and I see EPC as, as kind of our task force, you know, that's, that EPC is appointed by the full council um, to provide direction to us and provide the recommendations. And I see them as the first kind of line in terms of, um, providing, providing input. And I think many of, of, of our colleagues tonight have referenced some of the comments by the commissioners, which is exactly what we should be doing because they are, you know, uh, the ones reviewing it. So I think when it, when there's discussion about a task force, I feel like we, we have that with EPC. Um, and then wanted to talk about, you know, initially when looking at the general plan, I was inclined, or I'm looking at the housing element. I thought a lot about the general plan and I thought, you know, do we need an amendment? Do we need to? But, but what I was most kind of impressed with was kind of the, the foresight of all of those who worked on the general plan before us. Because if you look at the general plan and where it's supposed to take us, which is where this latest update of the housing element is supposed to take us as well. We've been pretty forward-thinking. We have precise plans throughout our city. We have change areas throughout our city. Um, that I think will, will help us meet, um, the goals and the large numbers, um, that we've been given. And when we look at the city's current project list, at least for October twenty twenty-one, I saw a thirty-six-page document with eighty-one current projects. So staff is, is, is working really hard and I just want to commend them once again for not only kind of the, the, the thirty thousand foot views, which the housing, or the general plan was created with in twenty twelve, but also that we've been able to continually implement be forward-thinking. And then we continue to have, you know, almost a hundred projects in the pipeline, um, to help address our, our housing needs. So, um, I, I do think that there are other, there are other kind of puzzle pieces, um, and they were mentioned tonight, the, the R, R three update as well as the, the CFD brought up by the school district. And so I think those are important puzzle pieces, but I think it's, you know, how do those um, kind of intersect with the housing element, um, versus kind of wrapping them in. And so I want that to be an ongoing conversation of, of all of these. Um, and having robust community outreach about each of these various topics, cause they are interrelated. But I don't think one supersedes the other. I think it's gonna have to be kind of a holistic kind of suite of projects and programs that the city is gonna do to address, uh, our, you know, lack of better word, our housing woes. And then the only thing that really stood out to me in terms of, um, some items is the, I really liked the data efficiency. I really appreciate that. Um, you know, we're, we're moving in this direction. I think it promotes a lot of transparency and greater understanding for both, you know, council members, but, but also the public. And, and do appreciate the comments about legislative advocacy. I, I know that, um, some other colleagues mentioned this as well, but I think if we've learned anything during this pandemic, it's that we can't do anything alone and that it re, needs to be regional collaboration. And so what does that mean? Does it mean kind of more county collaboration, state collaboration? Um, we're, we're seeing many more bills coming from Sacramento, so, um, really wanna highlight that point as well. So those are my comments. Um, in terms of summary, I'm gonna turn to our Assistant Community Development Director, uh, or Assistant, uh, City Manager and our Community Development Director, Ms. Vostava, to see if she can, um, summarize things. Or would you like me to take a stab first?
Um, I can start if that's okay. I've been taking some notes. Um, um, in general, I think, uh, council was supportive of the staff approach to RENA, um, constraints analysis as well as the policies. What we did here, um, were that, um, the city should look at constraints in a more robust manner and do some robust analysis. Would be also heard is that we should do a lot of more community outreach um, to folks who are not traditionally brought into the process. And, um, uh, we have received quite a bit of information and be happy to get more, um, if there are specific groups you'd like us to target. Um, uh, looking, um, at, uh, what the RHC, um, uh, uh, HRC is doing, um, to see if the story, some of the stories could come into the housing element. Um, it's interesting because we were looking, we were actually going to be doing exactly that. So that's a, that's a great idea to, to, um, create uh, so sort of personalize people's experiences so they understand what, what the housing element can do for them. Um, we also heard, um, on, um, uh, continuing with advocacy for funding, um, so that the, the city continues to get support from the state as well as the county. Um, there was general, there was agreement to not include R three areas, but also to make sure that um, residents and, and the public who are interested in the R three process get, get information on that. Um, I would like to say that we, there's a, there's a very good reason why we separated those because the housing element is on a different track and the R three, um, is really gonna be slowed down because we wanna reach out to community before we bring it back. Um, additionally, um, there were a lot of policies regarding, um, looking at how to increase housing for affordable categories, um, as well as single adults, um, extremely low income or ELI, uh, folks who are, um, de, developmentally challenged or disabled. Um, let's see. Uh, in terms of, uh, housing element sites, I think Councilmember Hicks provided quite a comprehensive list of low-density, um, shopping malls, looking at West Terabella, around El Camino Hospital, Moffett Precise Plan, looking to increase heights in some areas where necessary, and then sitting lots downtown. Uh, in terms of policies, so again, there was general agreement. Um, I think, uh, some of the ones that I'd like to highlight are, um, looking at housing local workers and families, looking at, um, how to streamline and provide incentives for ADUs, including loans, looking at tenant opportunities to purchase, um, community land trusts or CLTs, um, mixed income cohousing, um, those were sort of the general summary, uh, Mayor.
Yeah, and we did hear, you know, wanting to, um, I, I did hear the sustainability, you know, I know that that's a bullet, but just maybe like an asterisk next to the sustainability. I heard quite a few folks mention that as well as, um, you know, transportation, particularly public transportation. And how might that help us, um, meet those sustainability goals? But I think that that is, um, the summary that I heard. Um, unless any member of council would like to include something. Councilmember Matachak.
I just wanna do a check-in on, um, really what the summary should include. You know, in the past, um, when we've talked about this at our, um, council team-building exercises, um, we said that at study sessions, we would summarize the council majority view. Um, and I feel like this was a lot more than that. Um, it was, um, a, a lot of comments that maybe one council member or two council members made. So I think we need to either, um, like circle back to see if all the council members or the majority agree with all those comments. Um, because I, I feel like it was, um, much more than what I thought we were traditionally doing when we summarized.
Sure, we'll, we'll cir, go back. Let me hear from Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I meant to mention this before and I, I, I just wanted to voice a note of caution about identifying specific parcels um, that, you know, might be something that, uh, could, there could be incentives to redevelop. Um, because I, I think especially, um, when we're talking about the small doctors and dentists and veterinarian offices and some of the, uh, and some of our, um, uh, service businesses in the community that have been there for many years and do represent diversity in terms of ethnicity. Um, I, I think that a, a note of caution is really important to, um, make sure that we don't start expectations out and create problems for people.
Thanks, Councilmember Lieber. That, that reminded me, yes, I wanted to talk about, we have, um, our small business strategy that we've been working on. And so how do we have the small business strategy um, also play into, um, the housing element? Okay, I'm seeing lots of different hands getting raised. So I think that I'd like to try to circle back and, and, and and do what Councilmember Matachak mentioned, which is what we heard council majority on. So I appreciate Ms. Vostava giving us the summary of what she heard. Um, and then I can help distill what I heard, um, unless that these are questions or these are clarifications. Is that what council members have? Councilmember Hen, or what, what is your comment? Or what, what is your comment?
Clarification.
Okay.
So when I listed the number of possible sites that could be looked at, that I'm certainly not saying to develop all of those sites or reason all those sites. But one of the things in the, the staff report was the possibility of coming back with multiple options. So I kind of wanted to cast as wide a net as possible so that we could, uh, in future sessions, see a lot of options. And just fleshed out a little bit and so that we would, um, have choices. Um, and, uh, along with saying that, I want to say that I'm mindful of what Councilmember Abicoga said, that when you upzone, you often make a, make the area more expensive. So I would also like to know how to get around that liability. Thank you.
Councilmember Schalter.
I was just gonna say that, um, I, I, I think, uh, Councilmember Matachak had a good point. Um, in many instances, uh, this wouldn't be a summary. But, but what we're doing tonight is the beginning of, uh, a, a very important, um, project. And we're sort of trying to get more of the summation of, of, of what are the council's thoughts and feelings, um, based on um, what we've heard and, and studied. So I, 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 I think in this, in this instance, the laundry list that, um, you've come up with is, is, is actually quite good.
Thanks, Councilmember Schalwalter. So, you know, I think that it's, uh, yes, it's, Ms. Vostava, I'll get right to you. So I think part of it is this, the study session is, you know, just that, it's a study session. And so I appreciate every, everyone putting forward all their ideas. And I think when Ms. Vostava and I are coming up with our summary, it's, it's what we heard. This is the summary of what we heard. And so I think before we go forward, you know, Ms. Vostava can clarify, I think, what they need. And I think what they need was the answers to questions one and two. Um, and we can see if there's anything that rose to the top in terms of if we heard four, which is the majority or more, mention anything in particular. So just wanted to provide that, um, clarity point. Um, but you know, this is not a final council action and I think, um, it's more of the exploratory, um, phase. But Ms. Vostava, are there, can, you had your hand raised?
Yes, if I had to summarize the majority, I would say that, um, question one, um, there was agreement with the staff approach um, on the housing element sites and constraints analysis. Um, and question number two, there was support of the policies. Um, the other overarching issue that was brought up by the majority of council members was to do additional outreach and reach out to communities, um, who are not traditionally represented. Um, and the others, I think, um, we didn't get four, but we think they're all good ideas to follow up on.
Yeah, I might, I might even kind of bring that a little bit, um, narrower, Ms. Vostava, and just say a majority spoke about outreach. I would say outreach and I don't wanna, I don't wanna narrow it too much, but it, but it sounded like more robust outreach overall. That's what I heard. City Manager McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, the three main areas that I heard council majority feedback on, besides what's already been summarized, which was supportive of staff's approach to question one, supportive of the policies. But the three areas were to do more robust community outreach that, to folks that weren't traditionally part of the process, to groups who might not be traditionally part of the process. The second one was to continue or try to advocate more funding, whatever efforts that we might be able to do at the state level. And the third area was to not include the R three as part of this process. So those were the overarching areas that I heard from majority of council besides just some of the general feedback.
Great, thank you. So I think for this summary, for purposes of the, of the clerk, so for question one, agreement with staff approach, question two, support of the policies, and council majority, which is four or more on community outreach, to continue to advocate for more funding from the state and to not include R three. Are council members comfortable with that summary? Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you. Very, a quick question. So not include R three means that we're not, for the purposes of the housing element, not identifying sites, we're inclusion in the inventory that are zoned R three. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, let me, let me just clarify. I'm sorry to interrupt. We may identify R three sites in the inventory, but we would not assume any increased densities as a result of the proposed R three update.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Great. All right. Well, we are well past our six regular meeting start time. If, if colleagues are comfortable with this summary, then I'd like to move forward. Can I see some nodding heads? Okay, all right, all right. So I'd like to, if people are okay, perhaps move on and, and we can take a break maybe at another point, just given the lateness of the, of our start. So I believe I need to call to order our, our special session. Is that right? City Attorney Chopra? Yeah, okay. We'll be starting our special session at seven fifty-four. Welcome to the City Council Special Meeting of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. I'm going to read the usual announcement as required. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the City of Mountain View City Council Resolution Number one eight six one three, in accordance with Assembly Bill three six one. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview dot legisstar dot com, on YouTube at mountainview dot G O V slash YouTube, and on Comcast Channel twenty-six. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview dot G O V slash meeting to enter the Zoom meeting or by phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and entering webinar ID eight five four three one two three zero one six two. Any emails received by four thirty P M today were received directly by the City Council. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, we'll move on to item two, which is our roll call. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abicoga.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Lieber. Councilmember Maticek.
Here.
Councilmember Scholter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Here.
And Mayor Kamai.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. So we'll move on to item three, which is our presentation. We'll now take public comment for the presentation item. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the presentation item listed on the agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. And we'll display a two-minute timer on the screen. Okay, I am not seeing any hands, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to our city manager for item three point one, which is our COVID nineteen update by our city manager, Kimber McCarthy.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening and hello, council members and members of the public. So I am back again. I don't think that any of us thought after we wrapped this up in June that I would necessarily be back with the update. My last update to you all was on June twenty-second, and at that time, we did not really expect the Delta variant to take effect as bad terribly as it, as it has. So we thought that it would be helpful to provide counsel and the public with an update on what's happening now and what is available to people in the community and resources. So I'm going to go ahead and start my presentation. Okay, so the first thing that I'm going to show is, if you all remember, this was typical of what we always talked about before in our first slide. And so the numbers you see now are as of yesterday, countywide.
We don't, we don't see your slide yet.
Oh, you don't see them?
No, sorry. It might be a delay. I'm not sure.
Let me see here. Hold on. Actually, you know what? It is operator error. Sorry about that. All right, can you see it now?
Yes, it's kind of, it's not full screen, though.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
There we go, there we go.
Now?
Yes, now it is.
Okay, great. Yeah. That was operator error. Okay, here we go. So again, this is the dashboard that we always used to talk about in the past. So you see the top, those are the COVID numbers countywide as of yesterday, and the bottom dashboard are the numbers as of November twelfth. So what I wanted to point out here, as I mentioned, the last update was on June twenty-second. So at that time, the cases countywide were right around a hundred and twenty thousand. So now they're around a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and forty-nine thousand. At that time, there was around eighty-one percent of folks countywide vaccinated. Now we're at around eighty-six percent. In Mountain View, we had around thirty-one hundred cases compared to now, there's about thirty-eight hundred. So there really has been less of an increase in our county compared to a lot of other places. We've certainly had an increase, but it has slowed down considerably, presumably what we all think is due to the vaccine. So last week, the governor did announce that he was continuing to extend the executive order that he issued almost two years ago in, in March of twenty twenty to extend the state of emergency. So essentially, what this means is that the governor said that this is really about the ability to have access to goods and services and continued funding that we would, we would be receiving. But it also is in response to some counties inland that are actually experiencing higher case rates, where they are increasing at a much quicker and faster rate than we are here in the Bay Area. So you all may have heard that the criteria for lifting the indoor mask requirement is related to a few different considerations. So as a region, the Bay Area Health Officers announced in October last month that three metrics are going to be used to determine if the county is going to be able to relax these indoor mask requirements. The first one is that COVID transmission needs to be at a moderate or the yellow transmission level, and this is the level that the CDC has required. So right now, we are in the orange level, so we are below the yellow level. So we haven't quite hit that yet. The second requirement is that the vaccination rate needs to be at least eighty percent for all residents in the county, regardless of vaccination eligibility, or eight weeks after the FDA has approved the five to eleven-year-olds for vaccinations. And then the third metric is that hospitalizations need to be low and stable. So what all this really means is that it is really looking like it's probably not going to be until late quarter one, maybe early quarter two, to when we are looking at a potential lifting of this masking requirement. So again, maybe March, maybe April, but if, if you look at how all three of these requirements play out, and if you look at this eight weeks after children can be vaccinated, we're really, we're really kind of going into that spring timeframe. In terms of what's happening with holiday travel, there has been a concern that as we go into this Thanksgiving and holiday period in December, that there will be numbers of cases climbing again. So as I mentioned, there were areas inland that have been hit harder, particularly in the Central Valley and Greater Sacramento region, and also in those Southern California areas like Orange County and Riverside. Their hospitalizations have increased pretty significantly, just in the last couple of weeks, by over twenty percent. But here in the Bay Area, we are actually at our lowest point in three months. So you see, there's quite a, a bit of disparity between what's happening here and what's happening in other places. And we really are fortunate in that we have a very high vaccination rate compared to many other, most other counties. And then also statewide, the vaccination rate is sixty-three percent, whereas I mentioned earlier, we're at almost eighty-six percent. But all of this is driving what the, the public health officials' decisions are. So I would just say that they are not inclined to loosen any further mitigations. And again, we, we probably aren't going to be looking at until, you know, later in twenty twenty-two in the spring for the masking requirement to be lifted. As far as booster shots go, boosters are now encouraged for everyone over the age of eighteen. So before the, they were encouraging people that had various health concerns or were over a certain age to get a booster shot. But now the public health officer has encouraged everyone over the age of eighteen to get their booster shot. So you can still schedule that appointment at S C C freevax dot org. And I just checked it earlier this evening, and there are actually quite a few slots available, even at our Mountain View Community Center. Actually, the, the dates were right before the Thanksgiving time period that were open. So I believe it was starting the nineteenth, and then there were some open on the twenty-fourth and a few days thereafter. So as I mentioned, the vaccine is available now for children ages five to eleven. And that is also a two-dose regimen, just like the adults take. However, it is one-third of the dosage for adults. So we also have appointments available for children at our community center. And the way that the appointments work is you generally have to check, you know, every few days, every week, they release various appointments at a time. So you're not going to be able, whether it's at our community center or elsewhere, to go on and see a whole month's worth of appointments, but you will generally be able to see appointments for the following week. So as I mentioned, at our community center, the vaccinations generally run from Tuesday to Friday. Also on Saturday, the appointments are required and they are still free. If you have insurance, you can put in your insurance, but otherwise they are free for anyone. And I also wanted to just give an update about how our city operations have been just during this last stage of COVID. And we have opened City Hall now since July. And we have all of our other facilities that have been open to the public, and we are operating at our current levels of staffing since July. We do have around forty-one percent of our staff that is telecommuting at least one day a week. So the majority of staff that work from home also work in the office. So we have a really robust plan in place to allow folks to maximize telecommuting as much as possible, but also come into the office a couple of days a week as needed. And we are looking at around the April timeframe to fully reopen. So after we come out of this time period, after the masking mandate is lifted, that, that's really the timeframe that we are hoping for and looking at to have everyone back while still being able to keep our telecommuting policy in place, because that actually has, has worked out for a great majority of our staff. So I do also want to give an update about some recent community events that have been very successful and really point out the, the great work that our city staff have done to continue to pivot and offer these great events even during the pandemic. So all these pictures you see here are from our Monster Bash from October thirty-first on Halloween. And I, I don't think that any of our staff expected this event to be as well-attended as it was. So we had around three to four thousand people attend this outdoor event at Ringsdorf Park. And one of the really cool things about it this year was we had a Dia de los Muertos area where people could come learn and talk to our staff. And our multicultural engagement program team was there, educating the community and educating children about that holiday. So we were really excited that we were able to combine that with our Monster Bash. I'm also really happy to announce that we had a very recent graduation of our Spanish-language civic leadership academy. So this was a hybrid academy where some of the days were virtual and other days were in person. And we are happy that we graduated eighteen participants this year. And also, I'm excited to announce that we're expanding this program. And we're going to have a Chinese-language civic leadership academy that we'll be launching next spring in twenty twenty-two. So we're really looking forward to, to having that as well. We are also this week in our United Against Hate Week. So in the last council meeting last week, council passed a resolution about, we are standing united against hate. And we have a number of efforts at our teen center and our library that are supporting this effort. So I would encourage folks to visit our website to see all of those events that they may be able to participate in. We also have a grab-and-go Thanksgiving lunch that will be underway. So our Community Services Agency Senior Nutrition Program will be serving a grab-and-go lunch this Friday, November nineteenth, from eleven thirty to twelve fifteen. So we expect that we will be giving lunch to about two hundred and fifty people. And our senior center staff are coordinating with CSA for this very popular event. And they've also been working with the local Girl Scout troop to include a handmade turkey drawing in each bag from the Girl Scouts. And then the last thing that I want to mention before I close is that we are very excited that we are going to be having our community tree lighting back in person outside on December the sixth. So it will be from five thirty to around eight P M at our Civic Center Plaza. And of course, this is free. And we're going to have live music, refreshments, and of course, everyone's favorite Santa Claus will also be in attendance. So that concludes my presentation, and I am open for any comments.
Great, thank you so much, City Manager McCarthy. Does any member of the council have any questions or any comments? Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager, for the presentation. A lot of very good news and great and successful events. We used to receive information about the rent relief program as sort of a proxy for how our folks faring in terms of the housing impact of the pandemic. And I'm wondering if you happen to have any information about the success of the Direct Financial Assistance Program and also any information about a number of notices to vacate and sort of the post eviction moratorium expiration world.
So my apologies, I do not have that data tonight, but what I can do is talk to staff and provide that to council next month in another, in another update, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other council members have questions or comments? All right, well, I just want to take, thank City Manager McCarthy and for giving this update. I think in talking with her, we, we realized we haven't done one in a really long time, and the city's doing a lot, and it would be really great to have, have an update. So I think we'll just make sure that we add this onto the December, until a December So I think we'll just make sure that we add this onto the December, until a December meeting as well, so we can address what the Vice Mayor mentioned, but also maybe talk about any other information and items that the city is working on. I think it's, you know, as, as the city manager mentioned, we didn't think that we would need to continue these, but as our community center is once again a vaccinations site, I think it's really critical and really important to highlight everything that we're doing as well as let people know and thank, and thank staff. I did just want to highlight two more things, which is the, the teens, our, our Youth Advisory Commission had their teen wellness retreat on Saturday. It was a great success. The, the limit because of the pandemic was 100 students, and they had that many people RSVP. So just want to give kudos and thanks to staff from the youth perspective. It was great to hear so many laughs and, and see smiling eyes despite being in masks. And then also wanted to thank our, our staff too, who I know did a really wonderful job tending and caring to our Veterans Memorial. We had our Veterans Day Memorial on Thursday and got many compliments on the hard work that staff put together for making that in-person event happen. And then I know this week, our library is putting forward many different events for the United Against Hate as well as our Recreation Division. So just want to thank them very much for everything that they're doing and making us feel like such a community, even though we still, it's still not quite normal yet. So, great, thank you, thanks, City Manager McCarthy. So move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of the resolutions and ordinances will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. As a reminder, the purpose of the consent calendar is for the council to efficiently and quickly consider a high volume of routine or administrative business items with one motion. Although council members may remove items, it is generally not intended for the council to have a lengthy substantive discussion on consent calendar items. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Councilmember Abi Koga.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't need to pull it, I just have a question on item 4.4.
Okay, City Attorney Chopra, should we take the question now then if it's not being pulled or?
Yes, that would be fine.
Um, yeah, so I, I was the one who asked the written question about our, sorry, but regarding our council calendar. In the past, we've tried to avoid school closure, we, breaks, school breaks to allow for everyone to be able to participate. When school is out, families tend to go away. And, and so if they want to come and do public comment or whatnot, they, they aren't able to. And so we've tried to avoid the, the school holidays and breaks. And there are two dates in this coming year that fall on during spring break, and I think it's winter break. And I, I understand that we're in a different situation, and I guess I just wanted to confirm that even if we are to come back in person, will there be a hybrid option? Will there be an option to be able to, to zoom, zoom in to our meetings? And does that include, and, you know, I'll, I'll just say I still have a daughter. And, and so does that include even our, you know, city staff and council?
Uh, Mayor, may I answer that? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Abi Koga. So yes, we are planning on having hybrid meetings, and I know that we'll probably see how everything goes as we get back in person and as we adjust. But that would be the ability, that you would have the ability to participate remotely. And we are planning on doing hybrid meetings via Zoom.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Matashe.
Thanks, I also had a question then on item, on the council calendar. And if a council member is participating via Zoom, does that mean they have to be in a location where the public can be with them?
I can take that, I believe the, the rules will be relaxed and remain relaxed as they are now. I think if the allowance for hybrid meetings continues, that the, that requirement is from the pre-COVID era, and I don't think that would apply.
Okay, because that was my concern about one of the dates, because it conflicts with the NLC meeting. And I find it very challenging to participate from, say, a hotel where you have to arrange for a conference room so that the public can participate. I've had very unsuccessful attempts at that, I will say. Okay, and then the other one, I just want to register a no vote on the first part of item 4.3. There are several sections to that. So while I support most of the appointments, I don't support all of them. So I'm going to register a no vote on item one of 4.3. Thank you.
So point of clarification, City Attorney Chopra, are, is that possible? Is it to take portions of a?
Yes, for item 4.3, subitem one is a resolution, and the, the no vote for Councilmember Matashe can apply just to item 4.3 sub one. And then the rest, two, yes, the rest two through five is, is, can, can still be a yes.
Okay, great, I will read it as such. Thank you very much. All right, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the consent calendar? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Okay, I am not seeing any hands raised, so I'll bring the item back for council action. And note that the motion to approve the consent calendar should also include reading the title of the resolutions attached to items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3. Councilmember Shell Walter.
Well, first, I'd just like to make a comment on, on the fiscal budget one, 4.2. I'm really pleased to see that there's going to be a, a new human resources analyst, that we're continuing that. I know that having, that recruiting is a big deal, we have quite a number of vacancies, so that's great to see. And also, the reclassification of the Chief Sustainability and Resiliency Officer Position, that's great to see. So I wanted to make that comment first. And then I, I would like to move the consent calendar. And item 4.1, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View directing all legislative bodies of the City of Mountain View, subject to the Brown Act, to continue to meet remotely in accordance with AB 361 and making fund, findings pursuant to AB 361. And then 4.2, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View, amending the salary plan for regular employees for fiscal year 2021-22. And 4.3, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View, appointing Sharon Sue to the Library Board of Trustees, reappointing Joyce Lynn, appointing Chris Clark and Alex Nunes, and appointing Jose Gutierrez as an alternate should a vacancy occur between January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022, to the Environmental Planning Commission, and reappointing Steve Philios and appointing Jonathan Davis to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Hicks.
A second that.
Great, and a second by Councilmember Hicks. So we have a motion by Councilmember Shell Walter, seconded by Councilmember Hicks, and that will include a no on subitem one from Councilmember Matashe. We'll do a roll call, though.
Councilmember Shell Walter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Abi Koga?
Aye.
Councilmember Leeper?
Aye.
Councilmember Matashe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Kamai?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item five, which is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone, and we will display a three-minute timer. All right, okay, President Conley, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Kamai, Vice Mayor Ramirez, and honorable council members. I wanted to take a moment to share with you two resolutions that the Mountain View Wisman School District passed on November 4th. And I forgot to introduce myself, I am Devin Conley, I'm the board president of the Mountain View Wisman School District. The first is a resolution in support of establishing a county health clinic in northern portion of Santa Clara County. Supervisor Semidian, who serves District Five, our area, brought a referral to the County Board of Supervisors earlier this fall, asking the county to explore opening a health clinic here. That health clinic would largely serve people who receive some sort of health insurance support, like Medi-Cal, for example, and the majority of those patients often end up being children. So the Mountain View Wisman School District voted in support of a resolution to encourage the county to pursue such a health clinic in our area, because we believe it would serve many of the children in our district who might not otherwise have consistent access to a regular pediatrician visit or other healthcare services. The second resolution that I wanted to share with you is a resolution declaring our school district to be a defender for reproductive healthcare access and freedom. This is in light of some of the actions we've seen across our country where, you know, we have great reproductive support and healthcare access here in California, but many people in our country do not right now. Many people who are able to give birth have no access to reproductive healthcare. And so we wanted to make sure we took a stance, if we want Congress and other groups to take a stance on reproductive rights, it makes sense that in a place that is so amenable to it, we should also be able to have that discussion and take a stance on it. So I wanted to just flag those two resolutions for you all. I will be sending them in a letter to council members so that you can review them and take whatever actions you see fit if you find them interesting. And thank you for your time tonight, I really appreciate all of your work.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, I will bring a closed public comment and bring this back to council for item six, our public hearing. Item 6.1 is our public hearing on our downtown business improvement areas and allocation of 2022 business improvement area revenues. Business improvement area assessments are subject to majority protest by the affected businesses. Written protests against the proposed assessments received either by mail or at the City Hall Utility Payments Mail Slot prior to the close of this public hearing will be counted. At the end of this hearing, we will take a short recess to enable staff to collect written protests received during the hearing and complete a final count. Economic Vitality Manager John Lang will present the report. I think, are we waiting for John to come over? Let's see. I think he is moving over as we speak. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we are holding the second public hearing in the annual renewal process for the downtown business improvement areas. The first meeting on October 12th, 2021 was to review and preliminarily approve the BIAs. There are two improvement areas. BIA number one includes all businesses along Castro Street and the side streets. BIA number two includes businesses in the 100 to 300 blocks of Castro Street. The BIA assessments are used for specific programming and services to support the downtown business community. Any changes to the areas, including the fee structure and boundaries, do require a majority vote by the downtown businesses. In the annual report prepared by the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce, the 2020, the 2022 projected revenues from both areas are approximately $37,400. Tonight, there are three recommendations for City Council consideration. Adopt resolutions to levy an assessment on BIA number one and number two, and authorize the city manager to allocate the 2022 revenues from BIAs number one and number two to the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. This concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions? Okay, not seeing any, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. All right, I am not seeing any, so I will now close the public hearing, and I'm going to recess the meeting for 10 minutes while staff collects any written protests received during this hearing. So let's say it's 8:28, so let's just say 8:40. We'll see everyone at 8:40. Great, thank you. Great, welcome back, everyone. City Clerk Glazer, has the city received any valid written protest on the business improvement areas, one or two assessments?
Thank you, Mayor. No, we have not.
Great. I will now bring the item back for council deliberation and action and note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the resolutions attached to the report. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move the staff recommendation, including adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View, levying the annual benefit assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 22 for downtown Mountain View Business Improvement Area Number One, and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View, levying the annual benefit assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 22 for downtown Mountain View Business Improvement Area Number Two.
Great, thank you. We have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Councilmember Mataschek.
Second to motion.
Great, and a second by Councilmember Mataschek. Just do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Ramirez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mataschek.
Yes.
Councilmember Abay Koga.
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber.
Aye.
Councilmember Rasha Walker.
Yes.
And Mayor Kamay.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, so that concludes this item. We can move on to item six point two, our row house development at 294 to 296 Tyrell Avenue. Would any members of council like to make any disclosures? Councilmember Mataschek.
Thank you. I met with the applicant a long time ago. And I have been by the site on my own.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ramirez.
I would also like to disclose that I had a conversation with the applicant.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So we have Senior Planner Clarissa Burke, who will present the report, and then we will have a presentation from the applicant. Forest Lynn Barker, current Planning Manager, zoning administrator Stephanie Williams, Public Works Director Dawn Cameron, and Senior Civil Engineer Renee Gunn are available for questions. We'll turn it over to you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Kamay and council members. Today's presentation will introduce the Row House project on Tyrell Avenue and request council action on the proposed project and subdivision. The project is located at 294 to 296 Tyrell Avenue at the intersection of Middlefield and Tyrell in the multiple family zoning district. It is surrounded by multi- and single-family uses. The project proposes 11 ownership units. The three rowhouse buildings are separated by a common driveway and common open space. Five of the units front Middlefield Road and the rest open to an internal sale. The project is compliant with the Row House guidelines. The elevations merge traditional design elements compatible with the neighborhood with more modern design elements such as clean lines, architectural detailing, and a modern color palette. Many details of the project are discussed in the staff report. To summarize some of the key information, the project proposes to remove a single heritage tree in poor health. Due to the project details explained in the staff report, the applicant is not required to provide tenant relocation benefits to the single tenant on the site. And the project is subject to BMR Phase One requirements and will provide in lieu fees. A vesting tentative map to create 11 units and two common lots is also proposed today. In June 2021, applicant hosted a virtual neighborhood meeting. The DRC and the zoning administrator provided recommendations of conditional approval in September and October of this year. Request the council consider these recommendations to conditionally approve the project and subdivision subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available and will provide a brief presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So perhaps we can turn it over to the applicant for their brief presentation and then we can do council questions.
Well, I wanted to, first of all, thank staff for their hard work on this project. It has been a long time coming. It's been about seven years.
Do you mind introducing yourself, please?
Yes, I'm the applicant, well, I am for the applicant, Forrest Lynn Barker, and I am, also, we are a downtown business on Castro Street and a small builder, so it was very interesting to listen to the the housing element item that you had, item 3.1, although very long. So it's been a long time coming. I want to thank all of you, thank City Council, the mayor, the vice mayor, and all of staff for their hard work on the project. Unfortunately, it's a little bit bittersweet for us because currently this project, as it's conditioned, is not financially feasible due to the high fees that the city is imposing upon the project and the conditions of approval. The fees for this project have gone up almost three quarters of a million dollars since when we started the project, including the land use, the park dedication fees, and increased BMR fees and the number of other fees. Currently, they represent approximately 20% of the project costs, so city imposed fees and off-site improvements are 20% of the total cost of the project estimated at this time and actually makes the project unfeasible, unfortunately. And I think this is interesting because it fits into what you guys were talking about earlier today with the housing element. I think this project is on a vacant lot. We have the, so we have the highest level of park dedication fees, and I think the, I think the City Council knows the park dedication fees are the highest in the county and I believe the highest in the state. And, and then it goes on from there, all the other fees and the very, very, very high off-site improvement costs required by the city. But I think that when you guys are thinking about how to increase housing, you probably want to figure out ways to incentivize small builders. I'm a local builder. I'm a local businessman, right on Castro Street. And figure out ways to incentivize smaller projects. I did notice the map of the proposed areas of the project. Really, that's going to be fitting in with very large institutional developers, which I know make up the vast majority of the projects that are built, and I wonder if it is best for our city to be built, to have as landlords, a handful of large industrial, sorry, institutional developers to make up the majority of our housing. It would be really nice to see see you guys think about how to make projects feasible for smaller builders such as, such as ours and how the cost be in control and also for projects that, that we would be doing. This project that we're talking about, essentially vacant lot, we have a single-family house on it. On the two lots together would really fit in well. It's almost all what you guys are calling net new housing. It would be really nice for a project like this to work, and unfortunately, as it stands right now, it, it doesn't work, although it did when I started the process. The fees have come maybe not double, but very close to doubling since, since we, since we began this process. So, like I said, it's very bittersweet. I was hoping to be ready to launch and build this project at this point in time, but it will go towards your RENA goals. Because all you have to do is approve it right now, and it goes towards your RENA goals, but it's not financially viable at this point in time. Thank you so much.
So a point of clarification, not, is, is this, is, is council reviewing this project tonight or is this item getting pulled? If it's not financially feasible, I am, I am confused at why this is coming forward.
Councilmember, Mayor Kamay, this is our T. Shavastava. The city is processing this in compliance with permit streamlining law. The applicant has not told us that he wants to pull the permit and, and so we're moving forward. We're conditionally recommending approval and applying all of the laws and fees that are consistent with all development in, in the city.
So I guess the question is for the applicant. You're asking staff or council to move forward with your project tonight, even though you've just told us that it's not financially feasible? I, I feel confused.
Well, I, I did try to, I have been trying to get the city to take a look at some of their, some of their policies for, to, to reduce the impact of fees. One of the things that, that, the, the way the city interprets their fees, although it's not in the zoning code, is on section 4.1, sorry, 41.4 of the municipal code, the park and land dedication fee, they're interpreting that as the fees are due before construction. I asked them to postpone those fees till after there's inhabitants, after the, the building is, the housing is sold, so that one could use the funds from the sale to pay those fees, but currently the way staff is interpreting that code, that they do not feel they can do that. And they also are interpreting another, that's for almost $500,000 in costs that would be put at the beginning of the project instead of the end of the project. So I did ask that those fees be, be brought to the end of the project and not paid before, and that is, it's not actually written. and not paid before. And that is, it's not actually written in the code either way, the section forty-one point four. And I did also ask that the city look at their, the way that they're interpreting the undergrounding of electrical, which is another two hundred fifty thousand dollars in costs for off-site improvements, where they're asking me to not only do the lands that abut my, abut the project, but asking me to cross one of the busiest streets in Mountain View, which is Middlefield, four lanes of traffic, a very heavily, heavily, heavy traffic and a very wide boulevard. And those two things would actually make the project financially feasible. But the, the town, the, the city does not agree with, with those interpretations. And those two conditions, or you could say the accumulation of all the fees and all the few changes that have happened have really made this project financially unfeasible. But I have asked to have the project move forward, get the conditional rights right now. But as it stands right now, this project will not get built. And I think if you look at most of the projects that you guys have before you, they're almost always larger projects. And even those smaller projects that you do see, very few of them are getting built. And I think it's because of the impact of the fees. That's what I'm expecting because that is what happened to us. Is this extremely large fee. So I am asking the project be conditioned to move and get the approvals, but it, it will, it does not seem like it could be built right now. And which is interesting because we actually have a very hot housing market. So it's, fees are very, very high. These fees and off-site improvement requirements, the highest I've ever seen.
So I saw Ms. Shavastava's hand up. I don't know. I don't know if we should proceed with council.
Mayor Kame, if I may, if I may say, yes, staff is suggesting the council proceed with making a decision on the project approval. I would also like to note that both of the issues brought up by the applicant have been addressed in the staff report. And public work staff is also available to address if there are any other questions you may have. But we have addressed those specific questions in the staff report as well.
Right, that's my understanding too. Thank you. Okay, so does any member of the council have any questions? Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two quick questions. So the first is, I think you've already touched on this, RT, but we have a legal obligation to process the application under state law, right? Because it's code compliant and the application was deemed complete and all of that. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay. And then the applicant said, this is interesting to me. Even though there's no intent to proceed with the project, can we actually include this towards our RENA obligation?
It depends on when they pull building permits. I think if they pull permits after July of next year and they could, they could probably count towards the above moderate.
Entitling the project is not sufficient. The, the applicant would have to pull permits at some point.
Yeah, there, there are three categories of, of being able to meet RENA. One is, you know, permits that are pulled after a certain time period. That brings your number down. I think we went through that last, to let you know. The second is looking at existing sites. And then third is to look and see if we need to rezone new sites. So this would be the first category where the city can get credit for building permits issued on projects within that RENA period, which begins in the second half of next year.
Okay, but if, if the entitlement expires, then we could no longer, that, that number.
Yeah, the development is, is, is good for two years. And, and you know, the planning manager can correct me if I'm wrong about an additional year being given for projects related to COVID.
That the automatic extension would no longer apply, but they could always apply prior to the two-year expiration for up to an additional two years.
So they have up to four years to pull permits for this project?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lieber?
I, I know that we can't apply different rules to different applicants, you know, based on the size of, of their business. Just, you know, in an ad hoc way unless we had a policy in, in that sense. And I, I do appreciate the, the applicant's comments about the, the biodiversity of developers producing housing in Mountain View. But I wanted to know from staff, in terms of the, the utilities crossing Middlefield, is that something that commonly happens with developments such as this? That it would need to cross a very wide street going off the site?
Good evening, council members. My name is Renee Gunn. I'm a senior civil engineer in the land development department. We do have multiple projects that are in some form of development right now who do have to cross streets. You know, sometimes they're not as large as Middlefield, but they do have to cross some of our other major streets. And we have been consistently applying the requirements that the undergrounding cross the streets.
Okay. And my other question is, what is the projected sales price of these eleven units?
The projected sale price that was reported to city staff when analyzing the BMR in Lufis was one point four million dollars.
For each of the eleven units?
Correct.
And so it seems like buying a piece of property that has a single-family home on it and then producing that amount of money in return. Isn't there a way to borrow for the fees?
I, I would ask that the applicant answer that. Because there, there are various ways to get funding for projects.
I'd be happy to. Well, the, the way that lending works is you need to have a certain amount of cash on hand to get the loan. So the trouble with things like the park dedication fee and the way that that is currently being interpreted, which I said, like I said, the condition is not the same way as it's written in the code, which does not state when it needs to be paid. But the way it's interpreted makes you bring the cash out front. So that takes from your cash to cost ratio, making, making lending more difficult. Whereas if it is, if that same fee was placed at the end of the project, such as the way BMR fees have been traditionally handled in, in Mountain View, that is then taken from the proceeds of the sale and does not impact the loan. So that kind of difference makes a big difference in, in the financial viability in getting a loan. Now, large institutional investors use a lot of, a lot of corporate paper. They tend to have larger funds. That's, I think, one of the things that helps, helps them be able to pay these fees earlier. Another one is the size of the project. So although Mountain View has sometimes required other places, say, to cross streets, rarely as large as Middlefield, which is one of the largest boulevards in, in town. And we're only eleven-unit development, not a fifty-six unit or a hundred and six unit development. So the, the relative costs go up quite a bit. And also parkland fees, the highest in the state. We are, we are paying for them because we're a vacant, basically a vacant lot, just one single house on there. We pay the, we pay it on, on ten of the eleven units. So somebody who's tearing down an apartment complex and put, tearing down a fifty-six unit apartment complex, putting in fifty-six row houses, they do not have to pay those fees. So, so the fees are also disproportionately following, falling onto a bare lot development.
Councilmember Madacek?
Thanks. Yeah, I should have sent this one in, but what percent of the landscaping is native?
Compliant with the Water Conservation and Landscaping Regulations, the city adopted eighty percent is either native or low water use. And the majority of the low water use plants are also native as well.
Okay, great. And then how long have you owned the property?
I've owned the property since nineteen ninety-two.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other hands, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Okay, I am not seeing any hands, so I'll bring the item back for council deliberation and action. And note that a motion to approve the item should also include reading the title of the resolutions attached to the report. Councilmember Madacek?
So I'm happy to get the ball rolling by making the motion. I recommend the staff recommendation, which includes two resolutions. Adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View conditionally approving a planned unit development permit and a development review permit to construct an eleven-unit rowhouse development, a heritage tree removal permit to remove one heritage tree, and finding the project to be categorically exempt pursuant to section one five three three two in failed development projects of the California Environmental Quality Act at two nine four to two nine six Tyrell Avenue. And adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View conditionally approving a vesting tentative map to create eleven residential lots and two common lots, and finding the project to be categorically exempt pursuant to section one five three three two in failed development projects of the California Environmental Quality Act at two nine four, two nine six Tyrell Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Madacek. Councilmember Abicoga?
Yo, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Madacek, seconded by Councilmember Abicoga, so we can do a roll call vote. City clerk, please, there?
Councilmember Madacek?
Yes.
Councilmember Abicoga?
Aye.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramirez?
Yeah.
And Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, this concludes item six point two. So we'll move on to items. Council staff and committee reports. Does anyone have any thing to report out? Councilmember Abicoga?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report out from our Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board meeting from last week. We had a number of items that we discussed and moved forward with. One, we are extending the relief to customers with outstanding balances due to COVID hardship. So this means that customers have outstanding balances on their energy bill will remain a SVCE with SVCE through March twenty twenty-two. And this is for about eleven thousand of our customers who receive relief through the California Rearridge Payment Program. Two, we discussed ways to expand our efforts to cut carbon emissions locally. We're calling it doubling down on decarbonization. And we'll be focusing on multifamily EV charging assistance and grants and incentives. Full building electrification grants and incentives, reach codes two point oh and a, and permitting simplification, as well as looking at ways to provide accessible financing. And we've also approved a couple of new customer programs. One is for EV chargers at multi, multifamily properties. And the second one is a pilot program where we'll be giving away fifty portable electric batteries to qualified medical baseline customers to provide backup power in case of outages. We also had dedicated twenty thousand dollars for high school scholarship, a high school scholarship competition. And this is, it's going to be a short film competition. We're asking or inviting students to submit short films. And finally, we have signed thirteen long-term power purchase agreements committing over one point six billion dollars to renewable energy projects. So a lot going on, happy to report. And then also wanted to report that we had our cities association board meeting on Thursday, even though it was a holiday. And the, I, I, I think there'll be a report from Councilmember Hicks, but the main topic there was regarding the airport roundtable. And I'll let her finish that off. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
Sorry, remote, remote problems. Yes, I do have news from the Santa Clara, Santa Cruz Airport Roundtable. For those members of the public who don't know, almost all metro areas with significant air travel have roundtables made up of elected officials largely to make sure that noisy flights are not directed over residential areas where people sleep and live their lives. The Santa Cruz, the Santa Clara, Santa Cruz Roundtable was established fairly recently, I think in twenty eighteen, according to their MOU, to address dramatically increasing air traffic and route shifts. It achieved some notable successes that some members of our council were part of, like strategic plan and work plan and response to health and annoyance impacts of increased aircraft noise above us. But unfortunately, our roundtable is one, one of the few, maybe the only in the nation without an ongoing fiscal sponsor. Having a fiscal sponsor was was the main problem keeping it going. So in our last meeting on eleven, November eleventh, we voted to shut the roundtable down. Leaving, leaving us, I, I think, as the only region with significant airplane noise and no roundtable, although you can check me on that, that's what I've been told. So at this point, concerns on airplane noise can be brought to your congressional representative, Anna Eschew, and the San Jose Airport Commission. And that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else have anything to report? Okay, and I'll just share, we had our VTA PAC meeting last Friday, November twelfth. They moved it from the eleventh to the twelfth. And included was, you know, recommendations. I think we all saw the letter from supervisor Smidian related to measure B. So that went forward unanimously and that will go forward to the full VTA board, which a councilmember Abicoga sits on. All right, I think that's it for our report. So we'll move on to item eight, which is our closed session announcement. City Attorney Chopra will make remarks. And then the city council welcomes public comment on the items listed for closed session. City Attorney Chopra?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now meet on item nine point one, one item in closed session. Public employee appointment, California Government Code, section five four nine five seven. Title of position, city attorney, interim city attorney. Conference with labor negotiators, California Government Code, section five four nine five seven point six. Agency designated representative, Sue Rush, Human Resources Director. Unrepresented employee, city attorney. You may now request if there's any public comment, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And would any member of the public on the line like to provide public comment on the closed session item listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Okay, I am not seeing any public comment. So before we all leave, we will adjourn to closed session. We will have our closed session. Then we need to come back to the, this Zoom, come back here for our regular session, for our closed session report and our adjournment. So we would go to closed session and then come back. All right, see everyone in closed session. Thank you. All right, see everyone in closed session. Thank you. So if we can reconvene, that would be great. Let's see, city clerk, please, or, um, is that? Are we able to take the? There we go, perfect, great, thanks. All right, um, welcome back, everyone. We'll move on to, uh, item, um, 10, which is our closed session report. And I think for this one, um, I have a report out, if that's all right for you, City Attorney Chopra?
Sure.
Okay, great, so, um, just one moment, uh, so council met in closed session earlier this evening and voted unanimously to, to direct the Human Resources Director to proceed with the hiring process for the interim city attorney. When the interim city attorney is hired, there will be a public announcement regarding the interim appointment and the compensation details. Okay, and that is my closed session report. And that means that I can move on to item 11, which is our adjournment at 9:28 PM. Thank you so much for joining us. Our next city council meeting will be on December 7, 2021. Until then, stay healthy and have a great night. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes. Have a-